All right, and we are good to go.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome everyone. I would now like to call the January 11th, 2022 Longmont City Council Regular Sessions to Order. Could we please start with a roll call?
Absolutely, Mayor Peck, of course present. Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Waters.
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Here.
Mayor Yevakoram.
Thank you. We're having meetings being held remotely due to the ongoing novel coronavirus pandemic. You can watch the meeting livestream by clicking play on the video link within the interactive agenda window. The interactive agendas are on the city's Agenda Management Portal That's a lot to say. Or viewers may go to Longmont YouTube Live or longmontpublicmedia.org/watch. Councilor Martin, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Okay. I pledge allegiance
Pledge allegiance
to the flag
The flag
of the United States
of America
and to the republic for which it stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As a reminder to the public, anyone wishing to provide public comment during public invited to be heard must watch the livestream of the meeting and call in only when I open the meeting for public comment. Callers are not able to access the meeting at any other time. Some of the instructions for calling in are on the screen now. The toll-free call-in number is 888-788-0099. Watch for the instructions to be displayed and write down the meeting ID when it is displayed at the beginning of the meeting. Wait for me to open public comment and direct callers to call in. When I say to call in, dial the toll-free number on the screen, enter the meeting ID, and when asked for your participation ID, press the pound sign. Be sure to mute the livestream and listen for instructions on the phone. Callers will hear confirmation that they've entered the meeting, will be told how many others are already participating in the meeting, staff and council included, and will be placed in a virtual waiting room until admitted into the meeting. Once you're admitted into the meeting, callers will be called upon by the last three digits of their phone number and allowed to unmute to provide their comments. Comments are limited to three minutes per person, and each speaker will be asked to state their name and address for the record prior to proceeding with their comments. Once done speaking, callers should hang up. Thank you. We now have minutes from the last three city council meetings to approve. Can I have a motion to approve the December 7th, 2021 Regular Session Minutes?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Hidalgo Ferring. It has been moved by Councilor Mayor Protem Aaron Rodriguez, seconded by Councilor Hidalgo Ferring. All those in favor?
Hi.
Say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you. All those opposed? That passes unanimously. And I am going to ask you to raise your hand because for the city clerk to be able to record it. It's too hard to know who actually answered. So I now have the December 14th, 2021 Regular Session Minutes. Can I have a motion to pass? I'll make a motion to pass the December 14th, 2021 Regular Session Minutes. Can I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved by myself, Mayor Peck, and seconded by Mayor Protem Aaron Rodriguez. All those in favor? All those opposed? That passes unanimously. And the last one is the December 20th, 2021 Special Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion to pass that?
So moved.
Thank you. That's been... And a second? I'll second that. So it's been moved by Councilor Martin, seconded by myself. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? That passes unanimously. We are now at the Agenda Revisions. We have no revisions or submissions of documents tonight. But do I have any motions to direct the city manager to add agenda items to future agendas? Councilor Waters.
Mayor Peck, I thank you. I don't know if this is a direction to staff that you'd for which you'd want a motion. Or you would just can I just advance the question of the request and see who might else be interested?
Of course.
Late in 2021, we heard a presentation from Glenn where he laid out kind of the body of work on which his staff was working then, and I'm certain they're working now. And identified, you know, what was going to come to us in the first quarter and the second quarter of 2022. With following up on so many of our conversations about land code and design standards and and in the housing ordinance, et cetera, to resolve conflicts. That was very helpful to me to know what to anticipate from from planning. If we could get like a one-pager from Glenn and the other directors of kind of similarly, what are they? What are they anticipating bringing bringing to us in the first two quarters or, you know, through 2022? And maybe the first two quarters is about the timeframe that is reasonable. But just to have an idea of what for them, the big bodies of work that are in the queue that are kind of come to us. So when we do on Tuesday nights think that there's something worthy of adding, we have some idea of the other work that's that's coming to us so we know how to kind of set priorities.
Councilor Waters, that's a good idea, but would you like to make a motion to direct staff to bring it back at a certain timeframe?
I'll, you know, they've got a lot going on. I can. I was, if that's what you want, I'll do.
I think that that would be, I would prefer that, to be honest. Like if you want it at the end of the first quarter, the beginning of the second quarter.
It'll be helpful to get it before the first quarter since we have coming stuff coming to us. But if we could get it by the end of, I guess by the end of February.
Put that in a motion.
I move that we direct staff or the city manager to bring to submit to us some summary of the work that's being on which the staff is working now that will come to us in the first two quarters of 2022. So we have some idea of what to what to expect.
Do I have a second? Okay. All right, thank you. So the motion is, hopefully I am repeating this correctly, by Councilor Waters to direct staff to bring back a summary of projects or work that they expect at in February? Is that what you said, Councilor?
Well, it work in the first two quarters, but we would see the summary by the end of February. That would give them time to pull it together.
Okay. Um, I would like a city manager, if you wouldn't mind to weigh in on this. I know that we had some of this sounds like amendments that we were to the code that we were talking about earlier. Is this timeline work for you?
It was, yeah, that's fine, because I've actually asked staff to put a sheet together so I can start seeing that further into the future as well. So I think the end of February is a a good timeline for us.
Okay, great, thank you. So all those favor of this motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed? So that passes unanimously. Are there any other? Councilwoman Yarbo, I do see your hand up. Is that you use the reaction button and you have a hand up? No? Okay. Councilor Hidalgo Ferring.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to propose or ask the question of my council colleagues to dip into our contingency funds to help the residents with the wildfire. I know they've been inundated with items, but it seems like, you know, we've had several teachers in our district who have been impacted. They live in the area and they've lost homes. It seems like money is really what's what's mostly mostly needed. And as I was looking through the Community Foundation Boulder County, the Boulder County Wildfire Fund seems like their work, they're they're an organization that is working, partnering with local governments to really fill in the gaps and find what what money would go where. So, you know, I make a motion or propose to our my council colleagues to dip into the contingency funds for the amount of 20,000 to go into the the Boulder County Wildlife Fund.
Do I have a second for that?
I have questions.
Um, Mayor Protem, why don't you second it? And that would open it up for a discussion.
I'll second it for the idea of discussion.
Okay. So do you want to go ahead with your with your question?
Yes, absolutely. Usually when we make requests to dip into the contingency fund, there's a specific kind of amount and direction for which we direct those funds. So I was just wondering if you had a specific idea where and how much these funds would be allocated. I'm not against the idea by any standard. I just, you know, need a little bit more specificity, if you will.
Okay, so, um, yeah, so there is the wild Boulder County Wildlife Fund. And I would propose that we donate to that particular fund because that in, you know, just kind of looking through different, you know, rather than sending it to the to the government, you know, there they have access to receive state and federal funding. This one, this particular organization would allow or fund would allow them to kind of align their resources and fill in gaps where needed among residents in Superior and Lewisville.
Um, I'm going to break in here for a moment. Councilor Hidalgo Ferring, did you have a specific amount that?
Oh, yeah, I said, I thought I said it. Twenty thousand. I did. I, I, maybe I did.
Sorry, that was. Okay, so, um, is Councilor Martin?
Yeah, I think this is just a miss speech, but did you say wildlife fund?
Wildfire.
Fire.
Wildfire. And I kept typing that up, too, as I was.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, do we have any other discussion?
Um, yeah, I actually had a question in addition to that clarification, which is I am not sure whether it's appropriate to to spend money on the council contingency fund that doesn't stay in Longmont. As much as I care about what has happened in Boulder County, I just would like some discussion maybe from the staff about fund management to know whether that's okay.
Um, I don't know. Would that be Jim Golden? Would it be Eugene?
Probably Jean needs to jump into this. That was the question. I know we have some provisions within our city charter in terms of how we can spend funds. So Eugene, do you have a thought on this?
Mayor and Council Eugene May, City Attorney. We ran into this issue back in one of the hurricanes, I think, and donating to the Red Cross. And I think would be better if we had some sort of contract or, you know, exchange of services rather than a straightforward donation. Would be my recommendation.
Okay, um, we can vote on this, but Councilor Hidalgo Ferring, do you want to go forward with the with the motion?
You know, I would like to, and if anybody on council has some recommendations on how to how to approach this, but then perhaps contact the organization.
So I'm going to jump in here if you don't want to remove the motion. We need to vote on it. So the motion is to take $20,000 out of our council contingency fund and give it to the Boulder County Wildfire.
Fire. Yeah, I gotcha.
All those in favor? Raise your hand. Opposed? Okay, so that fails unanimously. So, um, we can, do you want to put this on a future agenda to discuss?
I'm wondering if that's the best the best route to take.
So what would your motion be then to put this?
So I would like to put this on a future agenda to, um, I don't know, I guess to discuss or, you know, possibly utilize 20,000 of our contingency funds to to assist with wild the wildfire needs.
Okay, do I have a second?
I will second that and volunteer between that now and the future agenda time to work with Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring to try to find the source of an IGA that we could work on.
That would be great.
That sounds great. Harold Dominguez?
I was going to say I could talk to the Boulder County Emergency Management Group and see what they're doing also. To see if there's something that can accomplish what Eugene talked about, if that's council's desire.
That's fine. So it's been, it has been, the motion's been moved by Susie Hidalgo Ferring to just put on a future agenda item to discuss using $20,000 out of the council contingency fund to help in some manner with the wildfires that have affected our county. Councilwoman Martin seconded that. All those in favor? So that passed unanimously. Thank you. Do we have any other motions for the for future agendas? Seeing none, the next thing that we have on this agenda is the city manager's report. Harold, do you have anything for us?
Mayor, council, we do have a COVID report tonight. I've asked Lexi Nolan from Boulder County Public Health to present that information to you based on what we were seeing. I just wanted to really let you all know. I appreciate Lexi joining us tonight. They have been very involved in in the recent disaster that we've seen in our neighboring communities. So for her to take time to present this information, just really appreciate it. I know we're in a spot with numbers right now. I didn't get the update earlier. So Lexi, you'll be updating all of us today.
Thank you, Lexi. There you are.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Peck, Longmont City Council and guests, I'm Lexi Nolan, Deputy Director of Boulder County Public Health. I am here to present updates on the pandemic and specifically in relation to the early impact that we're seeing from the Omicron surge. I need to start a little bit with apologies. You'll see even on the first slide tonight, we're moving very quickly and it mentions the Board of Health meeting because that is the slide deck that I adapted the presentation for Longmont from. But we are just, we're very busy. It's a very text-heavy presentation, which is not my preference. And we're just moving very quickly. Director Rodriguez sends her regrets that she couldn't be here with you all tonight. She has to attend another meeting. Thank you very much. So next slide, please. So our key messages this evening are that what we're seeing in Boulder County is not unique. It's very much the same pattern that we're seeing around the state, around the nation and around the world right now with this variant surge. The surge breadth and strength does require some additional action in pivoting in our communities. And we recognize that this comes at a time when our community and staff energy is really depleted. So the good news is that we don't think it will last very long. But we do need to pay some attention for a few weeks to get through this gracefully, as gracefully as we can. It is a dynamic situation. This particular variant is moving extremely quickly. I'm sure you all have been watching the news. And some of our numbers are changing twice a day right now. So I'll mention a few updates as we as we move through the slideshow just from today. We are finding that the three key goals that Boulder County Public Health originally proposed about eight months ago do remain the same and relevant to prevent severe illness and death in our community, to protect our health systems for everyone, and to promote the safest return to normal that we can achieve. And we recognize that sometimes the decisions we make aren't perfectly centered in the science and they are not perfectly aligned with what folks would like in terms of return to normal. And we really work hard and do our best and work with partners to find the most tolerable solutions that that meet the most needs for the community. Next slide, please. If we go a layer down on our key messages, I can let you know that we are expecting cases to peak in Colorado in late January or early February and hospitalizations to peak in early to mid February. We are seeing increased hospitalizations of children. There are a number of theories about why this is. Some of it has to do with the particular type of infection that this variant creates, really centers in upper respiratory infections rather than lower respiratory infections, which affect children more. But there are a number of other theories also. We are happy to say that there is new booster guidelines out. Our our 12-plus population can is now eligible for a booster. And the and everyone's eligible for a booster five months after their full course. There are some notable ways that this particular variant is shaping thinking and action within our agency and our community. There's less of a focus on cases because it does seem to be generally a milder variant. It produces milder illness. But the sheer numbers are pushing more people into hospital quickly. And so it's the pace of the spread that is the biggest challenge for our health system right now. For instance, we're not seeing patients quite as sick. We have more ventilators available than we used to in the last major surge. But we and we're seeing people being discharged more quickly. But it's the sheer numbers that are really stressing our hospitals. I'll talk to you a little bit about the science, but in general, what we're seeing is that the spread happens extremely quickly. And the transmissibility period of someone who's infected is shorter. And because cases are also very high, some of the implications of that, very in very practical terms, are that waiting for testing results to go into isolation is too late. By the time you get a test result, by the time you start feeling symptoms and get a test, you've already participated in spreading the virus around the community significantly. So effective masking is really critical. And I'll mention that a couple of times this evening because we're really extremely focused on the need for everyone to be masked with a high-quality mask. There's been some guidance changes to what we're finding is that requiring a test to release someone from isolation is less useful than it used to be because of this shortened infection period. And also our tests are in very short supply right now. So we're trying to really prioritize testing for folks that are feeling symptoms. Third, we're finding that case investigation and contact tracing is not a particularly effective strategy for containing cases when there's this much transmission. So we're really prioritizing those resources. And finally, the new CDC guidelines that were also approved by CDPE really reduced the isolation quarantine periods to be a shorter period. And that is because of that, all of those factors that we mentioned just a minute ago. So that's the good news is that our isolation and quarantine periods can be a little bit shorter. The bad news is that it this variant really is going through our community very quickly. We're seeing a lot of business disruption due to staffing shortages related to illness. We've seen it in ECE and early childhood education, in our K through 12 schools and the jails, law enforcement, hospitality workers, grocery stores, lots of other businesses, transportation and our healthcare providers, and the list is quite long. Finally, we are also paying attention to the interactive dynamic of the variant and the fire. Anticipating that family displacement due to the fire may exacerbate in speed cases in our community, speed hospitalizations, or and or have further impact on staffing in the region. Next slide. So this is just a little bit more about the science and I won't go through it in detail. But the median time from exposure to infection may be as little as three days with the Delta variant. It was five to seven days. That is one example of how much faster infection really sets in. The risk of reinfection may be five times higher compared to Delta. The Omicron risk of hospitalization compared to Delta appears to be lower. As I said, it's a little bit of a milder disease for adults. And we are seeing that vaccination does provide significant protection, particularly if it was the Pfizer or Moderna vaccine. But it does wane after about nine months. So those boosters are really important. Next slide. So kind of, you know, taking all that science together and just to kind of review the practicalities again. And I really, I want to be very articulate about this because there have been a lot of questions about the CDC and CDPE's new guidance on isolation and quarantine in that shortened period. But it's because the Omicron infection happens quickly and often before symptoms and diagnosis even appear on on the first day of illness. The highest risk is within households. It's your highest risk is from getting getting it from someone else in your household and exposure prior to diagnosis and symptoms. As I mentioned, vaccination boosting is very important. Viral clearance is more rapid among vaccinated persons, meaning that you're you stop being trends, you stop transmitting the virus sooner, right? And in situations in which transmission and virus burden is very high, those tools of isolation and quarantine are more limited. And we really want to emphasize that the path through this surge is high-quality masking, not cloth masking, but in N95, KN95, KF94. And ventilation, air exchange is very important also. Mostly, we would like to encourage folks just to sit tight and try not to be around a lot of other people for a couple of weeks until we can get through this surge. Next slide, please. So this gives you a sense of the magnitude of the surge that we are seeing. Our seven-day cumulative case rate is 1,243 per 100,000. Yesterday at BCPH, we downloaded 1,664 cases, and today that number was over 1,500. You'll notice those lines that are so tiny now and low down of high transmission, substantial transmission and moderate transmission. And we were way down in low transmission even as recently as June, but haven't been back there since with the Delta surge. Prior to that Delta surge, that second peak that you see was the CU surge last year. And this current surge that we have already is dwarfing it. And we have about two more weeks until we anticipate that we'll be peaking. Next slide. Our seven-day positivity rate in Boulder County is right around 25%. You can see how quickly that positivity rate moved up. This is not unusual. I think the Colorado positivity rate is at about 28%. And there are a number of counties, including counties nearby, that have positive rates in the mid 30s. Next slide. This is an age breakdown, but it's a little bit different than what we usually show. This is an age breakdown, showing the proportion of COVID case cases for each age group. And the reason that I wanted to show it to you is because I would like you to notice that that brown line on the top, that five to 11, is dropped significantly. And those are ages. That's a misprint. Those are ages. The five to 11-year-old group was a significant proportion of the, of the population of cases back in November. At the, in the middle of November, when vaccinations became available, you see a drop. And four weeks later, when their second dose became available, you see another significant drop. Our population of sixty five plus, that blue line along the very bottom is a population that in Boulder County has maintained very high vaccination rates and very high booster rates and managed to keep its proportion of cases quite low. So just to really reinforce that value of vaccination and boosters in this context. Next slide. This is a projection of cases from the Institute for Health Metrics and Evaluation. And what's important to notice about this graph is not how scary that, that number goes up to, but how much value we can get out of masking and how it brings the number down so significantly. The green dotted line, that lower green dotted line in the projection is the projected impact of cases, a number of cases if there's strong masking in the community. Luckily, Boulder County does have strong masking. We need to encourage folks that we come into contact with, who may not have a masking requirement where they're located, to also go ahead and just for a few weeks, go ahead and mask up with a high quality mask and it will really help our health system. Next slide, please. Just to review, this is where we are with our vaccinations at this point in different age groups. This is vaccinations with the single dose. And the reason why we think it's useful is because it indicates intention. And there, there are a couple of age categories right now that have recently gotten their first dose. So if we showed you the second dose, it might not give you as clear a direction that we're going in. I think what's of note is that our five to eleven population is now at fifty eight percent vaccinated, which is terrific. We need to go ahead and finish that out. Get it a little bit higher for that age group to really protect them. The other notable change in the last few weeks is the eighteen to nineteen and twenty to twenty nine year old groups. Vaccination rates have increased substantially. And I think that this is likely due to the messaging of the variant. What I'm a little bit concerned about is that one dose does not confer as much protection as two doses. And even with two doses, it's really two weeks after the second dose that you really get that full protection. So we're thrilled to see some of those numbers increasing substantially recently. It's important for those second doses to happen. Next slide, please. I'll move on to some health system data. This is where we have particular concern. About seventy two percent of the hospitalized patients across the state are unvaccinated. That number's been dropping a little bit recently, we think, because folks need to go ahead and get their booster shots. Then we're seeing more breakthrough as immunity wanes. We see that immunity begins to wane about nine weeks after a full course of vaccination. So we need people to go ahead and get their booster shots. I'll go ahead and put a plug in right now for there at the, we've been working with the state to set up a mass vaccination drive-through site at the fairgrounds in Longmont. Appointments are required and there's more information on our website about that. Hospitalizations in the region increased by about a third last week. So what, in one week, they increased about a third. Notice that the bold notes are above thresholds for urgency and those include pediatric hospitalization, staffing shortages, medical surgical beds and ICU beds. And just to note, although those numbers for medical surgical and ICU bed availability have been fairly stable, the reason that they're stable is because less urgent care is being redirected to other care providers or is being delayed altogether. We know from the early days of the pandemic that delaying critical care has a health impact on our community, whether it's surgeries or routine examinations, cancer detection, all kinds of things. So we are concerned that this is, it's great that we can maintain a certain number of open beds because we do think that they will be absorbed very quickly. But we are concerned about the way and it's necessary, it's absolutely necessary, it's not a criticism, but that it has the impact of delaying care for, for other folks. We are seeing increased ER visits and significantly increased wait times in our ERs. And we're seeing significant staff cases even in hospitals that require staff to be fully vaccinated and those are largely due to external exposures. A number of hospitals and facilities are closing satellite locations and adopting additional guidelines to manage staff shortages. Next slide, please. So what, what is happening in response to these efforts? Hospitals are eliminating cloth masks as acceptable masking and requiring higher quality masking even in outpatient settings. The combined hospital transfer center plan remains activated to transfer patients so that they can best manage their resources. As you may know, the C D P H E enacted crisis standards of care for emergency medical services on Friday. It's the first time it's been enacted since April of twenty twenty. It means that only the most severe patients will be taken by ambulance to hospitals. It means that some patients may be taken to urgent care or other non-hospital facilities. It provides guidance to emergency medical service workers on what kind of treatment to provide. Assurance that they know what to, how to wear their P P E and that they have sufficient supplies and that they are no longer providing some kinds of life-saving treatment in situations where it's not deemed to be a good use of resources. So it may result in not transporting some patients or declining to resuscitate some patients such as those in continuous cardiac arrest that have very little chance of survival. So that's quite significant, right? This is, this is one of the ways that this pandemic, that by not containing our cases, which drives our hospitalizations, that we are really tying the hands of our health system such that they are really needing to ration care to best protect the community as much as they can. Avista, which was evacuated during the fire, is expected to be back online in about two weeks, which is fantastic. That's amazing that they can move back into the building that quickly. In the meantime, their staff have been deployed to other hospitals to, to support the staffing shortage. Finally, I'll just mention the new CDC guidance also allows hospital staff that have picked up COVID to return to work more quickly. Next slide. This is just a note that we see about thirty seven patients admit, per hundred thousand admitted to the hospital every, in the last seven days. Every day in Boulder County hospitals, Boulder County residents are generally only about one point five per hundred thousand of that share. And historically, we haven't exceeded five per day. So Boulder County is doing a relatively good job of not contributing to the healthcare stress. But we need to make sure that we keep those numbers as low as we can and also to encourage our partners in surrounding counties to help us protect the health system in the same ways. Next slide. So we are, this was, this data was pulled on Monday morning. It showed we've had seventy one deaths since May of twenty twenty one for a total of three hundred twenty nine. I regret to let you know that that number is now seventy five deaths since May and for a total of three hundred and thirty three. The deaths that we are seeing continue to be largely unvaccinated folks, occasionally vaccinated folks, but mostly in older age ranges. Next slide. So I mentioned there's some additional public health responses. As I mentioned, we've set up this mass vaccination site at the fairgrounds. Appointments are required. They can see, they can vaccinate up to seven hundred people a day right now. We would really like to encourage people to go ahead and get that extra protection if they haven't done so yet. It will serve boosters, adults, children, whatever's needed. The, we worked very hard. Oh, sorry. We worked very hard with the schools in December to develop new school quarantine and isolation guidance to better support maintenance of in-person learning. We were beginning to see some of the science. We could see some ways that we could use the science to our advantage to reduce isolation quarantine times and reduce quarantines in general and help keep kids in school safely. The new CDC guidance also aligns very much with that guidance and also supports the staffing shortages that I mentioned as it applies outside of school settings as well. We have been increasing public communications lately, particularly recommending that our vaccinated, our vaccine verification program partners encourage masking during the Omicron surge. It's not required right now, but we are encouraging them to, to go ahead and, and encourage masking during the Omicron surge because this virus is so transmissible. We have put out some communications on the use of quality masks, including wearing them outdoors in crowded areas and the discontinuation of cloth masks. If you go to our B C P H website, there's additional specific information on what a, what qualifies as a quality mask. And we are also encouraging, not requiring, encouraging reducing non-essential social interactions, visits into public places and also encouraging remote work. The virus surge has also had an impact on our surveillance and epidemiology teams. We are managing a very challenging data situation. The number of cases has created some data lags at the state level, as well as additional workload on our own staff. We, it's a very rapidly changing situation, so we are needing to keep a close eye on the data. And we are continuing to learn about what the human impact is because this has evolved so quickly. We are taking a pause on some of the more high work-intensive data collection and verification indicators. That includes race and ethnicity data as well as the breakout of, at, at the municipal level. That requires our staff to do an enormous amount of manual data coding, which we don't have the capacity to do right now, but we will pick up those indicators as soon as we can. We are also further prioritizing case investigation, contact tracing, focusing on the, focusing on outbreaks. Finally, we were able to provide support to fire victims. At the disaster assistance center, we provided eighty five hundred and ninety five masks, eight thousand pairs of gloves, five thousand rapid test kits, eleven hundred COVID vaccines, two hundred and twenty T daps, because tetanus is often a problem after fires, and five hundred flu shots. Next slide, please. So I will, I'll try to go quickly through an update on the schools because schools did return last week. There were some significant developments and I think that particularly the community, as well as the city council may be interested in these. Next slide, please. As you can see from this slide, we are seeing the surge occurring among all of our school age children, some more than others. You'll see that five to eleven, you'll see that repetition of the pattern of that surge a few weeks ago, the impact of the vaccination and then the recurrent surge that we've seen in the last week or two. Next slide. Just a reminder of the vaccination rates in the five to eleven, twelve to fourteen, fifteen to seventeen age groups. Twelve to seventeen is doing very well. We hope to continue to support increased uptake of the vaccination among five to eleven year olds. Next slide, please. So the schools have done a tremendous job to create the safest environments they can in schools. And this includes hosting vaccination clinics, making sure that teachers are vaccinations, vaccinated. Although we have noted other staff are less vaccinated and those are where we see some of the biggest staffing shortages for the schools. The schools have spent enormous resources installing high-quality ventilation, daily cleaning, distancing at three feet when possible, students, student symptom screening by parents, community and mobile testing sites, school masking in all metro areas except Douglas County, and ongoing communications and letters to parents. And we really thank our school partners for all of the work that they have done with us to take steps to make the school environment as safe as it can be so that we can keep kids in, in school in, in-person learning. Next slide. So what we're seeing is historically, we've seen relatively low classroom transmission. In the January return, there were a significant number of students and staff that missed the first day of school because they were recovering from COVID. So we knew that it was going to be a little bit of a bumpy road coming back in. Over the last, over this past school year, we've known several students and staff that have been hospitalized or with severe illness and one death. And I mention that because a lot of times people aren't aware of that impact on students that has happened over the last year in Boulder County. And we, you know, our school health staff are overwhelmed just as the rest of us are in this space. We are also seeing that some private schools have delayed returning to in-person learning or are using testing to return. Testing to return was not deemed feasible for our public school systems across the state because of the shortage of tests and the operational complexities with making that happen. We don't see that as a major problem be, for the reasons that I mentioned earlier. We really see masking as our go-to mitigation strategy at this point. We know that Denver moved to remote learning one day last week due to staff, support staff shortages. This is that issue of support staff sometimes not being as heavily vaccinated as teachers. We also note that the fire impacts create an additional stressor for BVSD and maybe also for some SVSD students in particular. Next slide. So so there were some guidance changes as students returned to school in January. So let's start with E C E. This guidance was actually developed cooperatively with our partners in December. And fortunately, largely aligns with the recently released CDC C D P H E guidance. And so what we see for early childhood education is that for quarantine, if the child's exposed, they are, we've removed whole classroom quarantine. We're not doing whole classroom quarantine anymore. But we are quarantining for unvaccinated home exposures. The duration is five days if the child can wear a mask upon return and then they continue to wear a mask for a few more days. If they're under two and they can't wear a mask, then we ask them to quarantine for ten days. In terms of isolation, if there was actually a positive case in the child, the duration is five days. If they can mask upon return for the child or staff, oh, excuse me, that's for staff only. Five days and then they can return and be masked. For children, it's seven to ten days of isolation. Next slide. At the K to twelve level, we are continuing to really work with our schools to prioritize in-person learning. We understand the challenges to parents, to the community, to children's mental health, to socialization, to learning processes that remote learning creates. So we have really worked hard to develop guidance that meets both the needs to protect from the virus and also supports our schools and our school staff. A lot of times the challenge is really creating guidelines that don't create so much burden for school staff that they can't manage the implementation of the guidelines. So that's been an ongoing piece of work that we've had with both school districts. So that's been an ongoing piece of work that we've had with both school districts, SVSD and BVSD. So as I mentioned, we adopted guidance. This guidance was adopted by metro counties together. And Boulder County, the Boulder County COVID nineteen school guidance is the following. Masks are still required and we expect them to be required for quite a while, given the current cases. And other mitigation strategies are still in place. The deviations from the CDC CDPE guidance are that we have defined fully vaccinated to include boosters. So children to be, for children to be fully vaccinated and get the benefits, the isolation quarantine benefits of being fully vaccinated, they need to have boosters at an appropriate time for them. There's a ninety-day exemption for quarantine after a student has had the virus. But we are applying that ninety-day exemption only after December nineteenth, when the Omicron variant was dominant in Colorado. And finally, the quarantine for high and medium risk, there's quarantine for high and medium risk for contact sports is more strict, but those students can test to return. Surveillance testing by schools is being provided in public and private schools via CDPE. In terms of quarantine, the rules are, we'll continue with no routine quarantines for classroom exposure, only for household exposure. And the quarantines are five days with five additional days required masking. Testing is encouraged but not required to come back to class. In terms of isolation, it's five days of isolation with five additional days of required masking. Kindergartner, kindergarten is now included in the upper-level school grade guidance as opposed to ECE. Previously, it was ECE because of the availability of vaccinations for that group. So that actually supports them to be in-person learning. In relation to that outbreak, we've really had to prioritize resources. And so we have stopped case investigation, contact tracing in the schools except for outbreaks. And parents may not necessarily be noticed, notified of every classroom exposure because there are so many. And additionally, we have really focused, had to focus a lot of our data resources simply on data entry to maintain, to keep some kind of awareness of what's happening with the numbers. Okay, next slide. I'll just do a few additional policy updates for you. Next slide. So in Boulder County, I will, I would, I'm very happy to let you know that CU, it's not on this, on this slide because as I say, things are changing very quickly. But CU is now requiring boosters for students and staff to return to campus. They are expecting to resume in-person learning at the end of January. Our universal masking order remains in place. As I said, we are recommending good masks, not just a good quality mask. What you're really looking for in a mask is a mask that fits your face well, that's snug, that doesn't have any openings, that covers your nose. The N ninety-five, K F ninety-four's and K N ninety-five's are the best quality. Surgical is okay. Cloth is, we're really actually kind of trying to discourage cloth masking on its own because it's, it's simply not as effective as the higher-quality masks. And I, as I mentioned, the vaccine-verified facilities stay in operation, but we are recommending masking and we are considering the possibility of incorporating boosters as a requirement as we go forward and talking to our partners about that. Next slide. I think you're all aware of the state-level policies. We still have the proof of vaccination for indoor unseated events issued by the state. It's been extended until January thirty-first, requires vaccination. Next slide. Our partner counties, surrounding counties of Jeffco, Adams, Arapahoe, now Broomfield has been added. Denver, Larimer Summit, and Pittkin all require indoor masking. There is an interesting lawsuit in Douglas County. You may all remember that there was a challenge to the masking order that they wanted to put in place. And so an anti-mask order was put into place and it is being determined now whether that anti-mask order was actually outside of their jurisdiction to do. A little, we can get into the legal weeds another day. Next slide. At the national level, we know the Supreme Court is reviewing the Biden administration's proposal for businesses to vaccinate. The TSA mask order is in place through March eighteenth. As we mentioned, twelve to fifteen-year-olds are eligible for a booster and the booster is now moved to five months after full vaccination status. So that's a whole lot of information. I just have a couple of slides to kind of give some kind of little bit higher perspective on kind of where we are in how we're attacking this thing. Next slide, please. You may remember this kind of spectrum of layered mitigation strategies that goes from more essential and less burdensome strategies at one end to the more burdensome strategies that no one likes to do at the other end. And we've really worked hard to stay in that less burdensome strategy space. But we're finding ourselves needing to dive a little bit deeper into our arsenal, into our toolbox of strategies. And in relation to responding to the Omicron variant surge, you'll notice there are a couple of strategies that are in red. They are less effective right now. So we're kind of, at the same time, we're kind of losing some tools in our toolbox. You'll notice that the, the green ones, which indicate that they're in place now, if they are in bold, they, we have just recently added them in relation to responding to the Omicron variant. Last slide. So we've really tried to embed what we see as a strategy where we're working with the community to create healthy habits and community self-regulation to create a long-term strategy for responding to this pandemic so that it's not this constant reactive mode of, you know, what's the public health department doing today? But really, how do we as citizens of Boulder County really know when we need to take steps? Because we have conditioned ourselves, we have gotten into the habit of changing our practices. So we find that the three goals seem to be pretty widely shared, which is really helpful for creating common expectations and a common set of values and goals. We also know that policies that support ongoing community-led corrections have been useful, such as our masking PHO that's linked to case numbers at different kinds of thresholds. That PHO has stayed in place where we've seen a lot of other communities go in and out of public health orders very frequently. And it takes a lot of energy to make those changes. And we really feel like having a consistent mask order where the requirements change within the mask order, but the PHO stays in place actually is helping to kind of train our community. Now lately, we haven't had a lot of relief to be able to take our masks off, but we hope that that strategy will continue to pay off. So some examples that we've seen of the community self-regulating, including organizations adopting their own vaccination policies for staff, voluntarily moving to remote work, particularly again lately. Many of our VVP participants are requiring masking till we're through Omicron and the public is seeking testing at higher rates during higher transmission. We've also worked really hard to support solutions that meet the community's self-defined needs when they come to us. That was how the VVP and the policy development support along with that were developed, were created. We will continue to provide ongoing data and analysis and provide, in public meetings for conversation and to make sure that folks know what's happening. We are continuing to work with businesses for whom mitigation presents challenges, including folks that seem to have a hard time enforcing the mask order. And we have been working to continue to provide PPE to small businesses at fire support sites along with extra test and vaccinations, just as that, in that responsiveness space to work with community. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take questions.
Whoops, I was sorry. Councilwoman Hidalgo Ferring.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I have a few questions. And it was primarily, you know, when you started discussing the K twelve public schools. And so I am, you know, full disclosure, I'm a third-grade teacher in the district. So I, you know, so some of this is, a lot of this is a concern to me, especially since I started last week with a fourth-in-my-class virtual because of COVID. So, you know, when you were looking at, when you were explaining about the, what is it, the, the change to cloth, or from cloth masks to more higher, stronger PPE. So what are, what is the, how is the Boulder County Public Health supporting businesses, school districts where, you know, just attaining access, having accessibility to correct masks, stronger masks? You know, some of us in the schools are having a hard time. You know, we're given one once a week and sometimes we're told that they're not there. So is this something that's coming from the state? Is this something that's coming from the county for us to attain? And, and as well for kids? You know, we have kids that just kind of throw the cloth or the bandana over. So then what is, what is the expectation then that we as a, as a larger organization, you know, whether it be school district, a business that holds a lot of people or, or the city, as far as, you know, should we be looking at having stricter requirements of our, of our staff and, and customers and students? Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
So I'll look you up for that one, yeah.
Right. Thanks for the question. It's a great question. It's part of the reason why we're not making it a requirement. We're strongly recommending it. We're trying to create a bridge so that folks can, you know, acquire masks, hopefully quickly. We are also providing some support. Some, we have provided masks, as I mentioned, to a lot of families that were victims of the fires, but we have also reached out to provide supplies where we could to other high-priority communities. I would have to check with our school team to find out what we specifically done with the schools. I know that we've been having a conversation with the state about PPE and tests both. So I'm happy to get back to you specifically on how we can further support any needs that SVSD has to supply staff and students with high-quality masks.
Okay, thank you. And then the other one, then it goes on to, you know, we have masking exemptions that don't necessarily require a doctor's note, just, you know, the word of the parent or even other staff who say, you know, I can't wear a mask. And it's, so, you know, we have that piece, but then, you know, so we're indoors. And then in the event of sports, that's another one where we're having, we're finding issues where people are coming in non-mass and they're coming in from other communities. So when I look at our numbers and then you see these sporting events that are happening indoors, you have people from all different communities coming in and it's exposure and it's infection in our community. So that for me, that's, that's where my, my large concern lies. And, you know, how, how do we as a community mitigate that or, you know, push back? Because, you know, we've had teachers who are, and even, you know, security guards who are like, hey, put on your mask. And, you know, you got folks from Lamar or wherever and they're like, no, I'm gonna do what I want. And so it, it puts people who, that's not necessarily their job description in a very uncomfortable place. So where, you know, as a county, what are we doing to help support or back folks who are in those positions in their businesses, workplaces?
Right, so this, I mean, in relation to folks on school grounds at sporting events, et cetera, yes, we've been having this conversation with the schools for months, doing what we can. But a lot of it is outside of our control as the public health agency or there does not seem to be sufficient agreement on what the, what we can do together in partnership with the schools. So I agree with you, it is an area of concern. And I think what you're really talking about more broadly is how do folks who want to protect the community and want folks to be wearing a mask approach folks who don't want to wear a mask? And, you know, we see that in restaurants, we see it in businesses. And we do have some training in relation to our business outreach and our vaccine verification program about how you can talk with people, how to kind of de-escalate situations. We have provided that kind of training. But we also, you know, we don't, we understand that difficulty and have a lot of compassion for the difficulty of, you know, trying to confront someone who may be a little bit hostile to what you're asking them to do. And so we don't necessarily, as a public health agency, we are not expecting people to, to push or force that. What we're really asking is for people to get educated about what the risk is, to be considerate about their fellow citizens, to encourage but not force. We were certainly not going to be punitive if someone doesn't confront someone who's not wearing a mask. It's, it's just not, it's not fair, it's not realistic. What we really need to do is we need to get through the next three weeks of this through the peak of this surge and get out to the other side.
Okay, yeah. So, so it never really comes to a point that, that your, your organization would intercede in any place of business or institution.
We have not come to that place.
Okay, okay. Would it ever come to that?
You would have to ask Director Rodriguez.
I will ask her. Okay, thank you. That, that's all I have. I'll email you with more.
Counselor Martin, I mean, I'm sorry, Waters.
We look so much alike, it's hard to tell the difference. Except she has that beautiful hair.
Well, I got most of it cut off.
These are actually real close to the questions that Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring was asking, but just, just slightly different. You made reference in, or you presented in one of the slides that right now, on an average basis, we have thirty-seven hospitalizations per hundred thousand residents in Boulder County. But one and a half, the average is one and a half. Right now, among the thirty-seven, five are Boulder County residents. I'm going to conclude that thirty-two of the thirty-seven are non-Boulder County residents. Is that fair?
Um, so those are, so those are regional numbers, right? So the thirty-seven is within our regional hospital system. So that includes a number of counties.
Which counties?
I'm sorry, I don't have the list on me right now. I'd be happy to send you the list of counties that are in our region.
Well, I'm just curious, what, what that slide presents or provokes for me is a question of, is there a pattern? If five of those are Boulder County residents, is there a pattern among the other thirty-two? And the follow-on question would be for, for, for me, not to you, but to our county commissioners, whether or not our county commissioners are reaching out to commissioners in those counties where residents are seeking medical care in, in Boulder County. And they would get, they'd get high-quality care in Boulder County, I'm not questioning that. I am wondering about the levels at which the outreach is occurring to, to take pressure off, given the rest of the data that you provided, pressure off healthcare providers in Boulder County that could be provided someplace else if everybody was following the same guidance. So that was, that was the question. Question related to the data you presented on schools and Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring was curious about masking, I'm more curious about testing. What, what assumptions can we make about teacher access or administrator access, school district employee access, in the Saverine Valley School District, Boulder Valley, and the private schools in Boulder County? In terms of access to test, testing kits and the cost of those kits? It's, you know, I just, I'll make a narrative comment and I'm gonna listen. It's, you know, I just, I'll make a narrative comment and I'm gonna listen. Seems to me if, if given, given the interest in the push and the data we've collected on kids returning to school and how important we know that is, uh, that we ought to value our teachers, at least, I, I think in the Boulder, in the, uh, University of Colorado basketball program, the basketball players have access to as many tests as they need, and they should. I just hope we're valuing our students and our teachers, at least at the same level we are college basketball players and the coaching staff, that they also would have access to as many tests as they need, when they need them, at no cost, to make certain teachers can monitor themselves, their family, and in kids in their classrooms. So can you help me with, what do you know about their access and the cost? If there are costs for teachers to get access to testing?
Okay, so I'm gonna take your first question first. The point of that analysis and what I can assure you of, because I have seen the numbers of, uh, average hospital admissions for other counties, um, Boulder is particularly low. So we are contributing a disproportionately low number of patients to the hospital system burden. Would we like other counties to find ways to do more? Absolutely. Masking would be a great start. But that's not really in our purview. We would love to see folks voluntarily masking, um, even if their counties aren't requiring it. I will say that the stress that we're seeing in our region's hospital system is the same all over the country right now. So it's not, so, so the solution, it wouldn't be feasible to think that we could displace patients because the number of patients are the number of patients. What we really need to do is lower the overall number of patients in Colorado. And that's what will really relieve our hospital systems. Um, and we feel like, um, Boulder County is, uh, doing a really good job in doing almost everything we can to keep those numbers low and to keep our contribution to the hospital system low. There, yes, of course, there are always places where we can make improvements and we continue to work on those places. But, uh, uh, we also recognize that, um, as a public health agency, we don't have a lot of control over some things. In relation to your second question about providing, financial and effective access to tests for teachers and staff. In an ideal world, yes, we would absolutely be able to do that. There is a national test kit shortage right now. Um, we are not expecting that to be relieved before the surge moves through Colorado. It's hard to find tests right now. Um, there's a, for instance, there's a state, um, program where you can order a test and it has a pretty significant backlog right now. And I'm not sure that anybody ordering a test through that system is gonna receive one before the surge moves through Colorado.
We're part of the backlog in this house, so.
Yeah. Um, but I think the other piece of the question, um, is really about would that be effective? And that was kind of that first part of the presentation that I, I really tried to spend a little bit of time on, was really showing how this virus, um, is infectious so quickly that by the time you get a test, um, and if it's a PCR test, it's a three-day, um, return of your result. Um, and that's after your symptoms started. Um, by the time you get through all of that, that horse has left the barn. Um, that you're not gonna really be able to, um, control the majority of the transmission. You've already done the damage in terms of, of spreading the disease. If it's a at-home test, if you're able to get your hands on an at-home test, we do also see that it tends, that at-home test tends to be less sensitive than the PCR test. And so it needs to be repeated. And again, you usually wouldn't do it until symptoms set in, but if you wanted to do it asymptomatic, there's just not enough tests to be able to do that right now. That's why we're really trying to be very explicit about saying, we need everybody to be wearing high-quality masks right now. That is our most effective mitigation strategy. And, um, you know, I love the idea of, of, uh, of being able to test whenever it's convenient. Um, it's just not an operationally feasible solution at the moment. We are still trying to do testing in schools. We are working with the state to do, um, uh, sampling testing, um, and to have tests available. But, um, in terms of having mass availability to tests, it's, it's just, it's not possible right now.
Yeah, uh, I just wish we, we could do that for teachers like the NFL does it for football players and the NBA and college athletics, right? They can do it. Uh, I wish we could do it for our teachers as well.
As do I.
Um, Harold, would you like to weigh in on this?
Well, I, I have a couple of points on this. I wanted to make you two, to you all, and then a question. So if there's more questions, then I can defer.
I, I just have an ask. It's not really a question. So, um, you can go ahead.
So the one thing I did want to tell council on this one is, um, you heard throughout, I'm gonna ask Lexi to stay on, related to my next question probably, but, um, when you talked about the impact of businesses in different industries, what I would tell you is we're in many ways not any different. Um, and we're starting to see more of our folks, um, out because they're also testing positive. And so what that really does is add to the operational strain that, you know, every business is in right now because you're also having struggles hiring folks. Um, we've obviously talked about the great resignation and those issues. And so that's just another burden that's coming on. The reason why I wanted to bring that up to you all is, is we are watching our numbers on a regular basis. Um, there is the possibility that certain operations can, could be impacted so heavily that we may have to, as we're moving through the next few weeks, make decisions that we're not able to open up certain activities within our organization because of the impact of people testing positive. And where we would really see that is where we're already seeing shortages anyway. So if you look at, um, recreation centers around the region, lifeguards are, are, are a different challenge for us. They were a challenge for us before this. If we were to see more people test positive and we couldn't safely operate a facility, we will have to make real-time decisions in terms of saying, we can't have it open today because we just don't have the staff. Um, and, and, and that's something that we're monitoring across all of our departments right now because, uh, we're just having to manage the operational impact of it. So that's one, that was the big thing I wanted to tell you is we're not any different than anyone else right now. The question for you all, um, and I sent you all an email with this question, is really based on all of this information. I know that you all scheduled, um, an in-person open forum. And the question for, for you all is, based on the information, how do you all want to proceed, um, in this? And that, that is, I wanted to make sure you had the data, that you understood what the world is. And now it's really your call as a city council to determine how do you want to proceed with the forum next week.
So, uh, let's open this up to, uh, the discussion, uh, Councilwoman Martin.
Uh, yeah, my opinion is that we should not hold, uh, any large public meeting right now as a city. So, you know, the steward auditorium thing is off the table. I did not think that our virtual o- open forum was effective and therefore I would like to try to postpone this until after the surge.
Okay, um, I would like everybody to weigh in on this, actually. Who, who wants to go next? Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
Thank you very much. I think there's an important piece of, uh, the open forum that needs to be held in a public manner. So I'd actually concur with Councilmember Martin that it should be postponed and not be held virtually and wait until we have a safe enough, um, level, uh, of transmission to hold a public forum, uh, in person.
Okay. I, I'll just call on, uh, Counselor Yarborough, please.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Peck, I agree with both, both, uh, Councilwoman Martin and Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez that we should postpone it. Uh, we should have it in person, but postpone it until, um, the surge, um, is over.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Hidalgo Ferring.
Uh, I agree. I, I'm, yeah, I'm in consensus with the, with the group on this one. Um, I would like to have the opportunity to have a, an in-person open forum, s- and, but now's not, not the time.
Okay, Counselor Waters?
I concur with what everything's been said.
I do as well. Uh, do you have your direction, Harold?
I do, and we'll work with some of the open dates that you all have and look at scheduling that. So, um, Sandy will be in touch with all of you. I just, um, so you all know it was important for me to tell you, let you hear the data, ask you the question. And then we can go from there. But Lexi, that's why I asked you to stay on, was just in case there are more questions regarding that for you. Um, but that's what I needed today, um, mayor and city council on this one. So I'll turn it over if you all have any more questions for Lexi.
Okay, thank you. I do have an ask for you, Lexi. You had mentioned in the PowerPoint that Douglas County was not masking at all. Uh, would it be possible to bring back the data, uh, and so that we can compare it to mask and unmask? Uh, it would, your help with some of the emails I'm getting that, from the anti-maxers, to have that data. And, uh, also probably for the school district.
I'll see what I can do.
That would be great. Thank you very much. This was a great presentation. Pardon me?
What I can tell you is we do have some old data sets that Lexi shared with us that are, that also, and there, a- again, there, the staffing's an issue for them, but we do have data sets that, um, specifically when you look at Laramie County, from when they implemented their masking order and what the numbers look like, literally the curve did this after the date. So I think I may have those in some old presentations and I will send you that so you can see where they really looked at Laramie and Boulder and what happened pre-masking and post-masking, because I think that does answer your question.
Okay.
And there were, there were two parts to that data, Harold, as we recall. The first piece was that putting a public health order to mask does change masking behavior.
Right.
That was the first slide. And the second slide was that the change in masking behavior directly aligned with a change in hospitalizations two weeks after.
Thank you. That was a great presentation, Lexi. A little overwhelming, but good. No.
For all of us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lexi.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor, I do have one more. I add him to City Manager Report, and I know this took some time, but we were definitely at a, at a, at a point here where I think we needed to take this time. Uh, what I wanted to tell you, and I'll just tell you briefly, um, great news. We signed the contract for an AMI meter contract. And, and so that's been signed. And, um, I'm not gonna take a lot of time on this, but really it's important as we look to the future in terms of managing, um, energy usage at our hea- at the household level and in the business community. But this really is the first step, or, or not the first step, but a very big step in us moving toward that twenty-thirty goal. We've been moving in other steps in terms of bringing renewable energy in. What this will do is it will allow people to really manage their consumption at the household and also save money because it reduces our peak, which then, as you know how Platte River charges, we, as we can reduce that. So that's a really big step. We're, we're hoping to have the first, uh, five hundred installed. Um, I think we're hoping for spring, but let's say spring-ish. So it may go a little bit beyond that. And, um, I just wanted to let you all know. I know they sent you a, a press release on that, talking about where we are, that you all had a chance, and it's been sent out. So I wanted to say that to you all.
Thank you.
Just letting you know, um, we're moving.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
I was very excited to hear that news. I was also very disappointed in that you literally, in the initial deployment, missed my house by two houses. So.
You, you know, I haven't seen it yet. I'm wondering where I'm gonna be in this one, but, um, it, it is exciting to where we're, we're moving to as a utility and what this will let us do. And what a lot of people don't realize is this will also let us evaluate our infrastructures and, and start, um, and taking some more proactive approaches in terms of our capital improvement projects. Dale, did I miss anything?
No, you got all those. And, and I, I would say to, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez, you know, we're starting with that five hundred, but, um, there, there's many folks that are probably close. And I think as we get those initial deployments in, we'll be more than happy to, um, get to your house as soon as we can, okay?
And I think that's for us important is also if, if we're asking the community to do this, it's important for us to, to be there too. I think that's the big piece on this.
I do.
The other thing I didn't point, yeah. And, and the other thing I wanted to say is we are bringing the opt-out program that you all directed as well for folks.
Good.
Which is why when you connect the two, it's important for us also to, to have these if, if, if we're talking about it. So I just wanted to give you that information. That's all I have for right now.
Well, and I, I do want to say on that, uh, subject that, uh, in PRPA of the four cities, Loveland is the only one that so far isn't working on AMI. And they did, it did ask me, the utilities manager sat down with me and asked, how did we sell this to our city? So, um, they're very interested. They're ready. They're, they're ready to go. They just need to have, uh, basically the, the motivation to do it. So that's pretty exciting. It looks like all of you are gonna do AMI.
And I've said before, we'd be happy to talk to Loveland and other communities that, you know, when we do our purchasing, our purchasing is done in a way where others can participate in it. Um, if the company allows it and if we, I mean, there's some logistics, but you can definitely do that as municipalities. And so I think I would pass on, we'd be more than happy to talk to them if they have any questions.
I'll bring that up at the February eleventh, uh, retreat. Thank you. Counselor Martin, do you have your hand up? No? Okay. Thank you, everybody. Uh, and moving through the agenda, the next thing that we have are two presentations. The first one is a proclamation designating the week of January sixteenth through the twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two as honoring Dart, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Week in Longmont, Colorado. Oh, I would like, uh, Glenda Robinson, who is the chair of the Martin Luther King Planning Committee, and Judy Huston to please turn on their cameras if they're here. And Dallas, would you mind putting up the pro- the proclamation? As I read it. A pro- a proclamation designating January sixteenth through the twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two as honoring Dot, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Week in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas January seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two marks the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Holiday on which we honor Dr. King's unwavering fight for the absence of oppression and the presence of opportunity for all who sacrificed to sow the seeds for a movement of peace, equality, and justice. And whereas, across the nation, in the state of Colorado and in the city of Longmont, honoring Dr. King has become a week of service within our communities. Events held throughout Boulder County are made possible by the commitment and dedication of many volunteers from diverse backgrounds. The combined efforts of these volunteers are a fulfillment of Dr. King's dream and highlight the importance of the civil rights movement and the need to take action. And whereas, Ms. Judy Huston has made a commitment to outstanding community service in sharing the importance of the civil rights movement, Dr. King's legacy, and keeping the dream alive for future generations throughout the Boulder County. Now, therefore, I, Joan Peck, Mayor, by virtue of the authority voted in me and the city council in the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the week of January sixteenth through the twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two as honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Week in Longmont and invite all to attend the exciting program honoring Dr. King. I would like to invite, uh, Glenda Robinson, if you would have a few words you would like to say.
Uh, yes, thank you. Actually, I think Judy, uh, who has been holding on, she's been ill this week, but Judy wants to say a word or two first, and then I, if you don't mind, I will conclude.
No, that's great. Judy?
Judy Houston. Thank you so much, yeah. Um, so this is such an honor and I thank the mayor, the Longmont City Council, the Longmont Multicultural Action Committee, and the city of Longmont for your continued support of the annual Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Life and Legacy Celebrations. As you all know, no effort is done alone and it is because of the amazing continued work of people like Glenda Robinson, Annette James, Adriana Perea, Madeline Woodne- Woodley, and so many others who are steadfast in their vision for a better world with actual liberty and justice for all that keeps me in this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Yes, and, and I would just like to, thank you, um, honorable mayor. I have not had that opportunity to extend that courtesy, but, uh, and the city council members. But, and the City Council members, thank all of you for your continued support over the years. Thank you for all that you're doing to uphold what Dr. King often referred to as the beloved community. It does take us all. And so I just want to say thank you for that. This year, LMAC, which is Longmont Multicultural Action Committee, the NAACP Boulder County Branch, along with the City of Boulder Humanization's Commission, and the Office of Arts and Culture, also Second Baptist Church of Boulder, Colorado, of which I am on the ministerial staff, will bring a collective collaborative effort here to both Boulder and Longmont. Our theme is the dream yesterday, today, and tomorrow. We sure don't want it to become a nightmare. Our pillars are celebration, tribute, solidarity, and service, all of which will be covered in our presentations. Sunday, we will open our series of events. Now, it's going to be a seri- a six-week series of events, but it opens on Sunday at the Dairy Arts Center at 1:30 in the afternoon, honoring the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King, but featuring the opening of the Withers Museum and Gallery Exhibit of Memphis, Tennessee. You all know, some of you all know that I'm from Memphis, and I was in that last March with Dr. King on March 28th, 1968. And so the Withers Museum and Exhibit has captured that as one of their images, and they will bring that here to the Dairy Arts Center. On Monday, we will be at Silver Creek High School. We are honoring, I listened to that incredible presentation. We are honoring all of the requirements of social distancing, all the CDC guidelines. And so we will be in person, and we will also, it will also be livestreamed. And so that's, that's a good thing. Now, this exhibit will go for six weeks at the Dairy Arts Center. We will have students from Boulder Valley Schools, St. Brain Valley Schools, who will be able to go through the tours. And what this exhibit is, is a picture exhibit of the civil rights movement. Dr. Ernest Withers was the photographer for the civil rights movement, and his daughter Rosalyn is now the Executive Director, and she will be here at Silver Creek and at the Dairy Arts Center to talk about this incredible exhibit. So I invite you all, the all events are free and open to the public. I invite every one of you to come. We, actually, it'll go for six weeks and will culminate on February 27th at the Mackey Auditorium with the Fisk Jubilee Singers. So.
Thank you, Glenda and Judy, and for keeping the dream alive. So we have another proclamation, and this is brought to us by Susan Martino and Patty Dooly Strappelli, Boulder County Public Health Specialists. It's a proclamation designating January 2022 as National Radon Action Month in Longmont. Dallas, would you mind putting the proclamation up? The proclamation designating January 1st through the 31st, 2022, as official National Radon Action Month in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas radon is an invisible, odorless radioactive gas that threatens the health of our citizens and their families. And radon is a leading environmental cause of cancer mortality in the U.S. and the eighth leading cause of cancer mortality overall. And whereas the Colorado Rocky Mountain region has been ranked Zone One, an area with the highest radon potential possible by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and Colorado residential and Colorado residential radon data has shown 50% of Colorado homes tested as being at or above the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency radon action level of 4.0 PCI/L. And whereas any home in Longmont may have elevated levels of radon and supporting recommended radon practices and policies to reduce radon exposure is important to protect our community's health and welfare. And whereas testing for radon is simple and inexpensive and identified radon problems can be fixed. And whereas Boulder County Public Health, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, and the American Lung Association are supporting efforts to encourage Americans to test their homes for radon, have elevated levels of radon reduced, and have new homes built with radon-resistant features. Now therefore, I, Joan Peck, Mayor, by virtue of the authority vested in me and the City Council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the month of January 1st through the 31st, 2022, as official National Radon Action Month in Longmont, and encourage all residents to complete a simple and inexpensive test for radon. Do Susan Martino or Patty Strappelli want to add a few words to this?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. I'm Susan Martino. I'm with the Boulder County Public Health Air Program. And we want to thank you very much for proclaiming January as National Radon Action Month in Longmont. I'd just like to say, in the United States, lung cancer kills more people every year than breast, prostate, and colon cancers combined. And radon exposure causes as many as 500 lung cancer deaths every year in Colorado. And about 50% of the homes in Boulder County have elevated radon levels. So we'd like to take this time to encourage people to really to test their homes. It's a simple and expensive thing that they can do themselves. And to then, if their radon levels are elevated in their homes, to take steps to fix that. Does anyone have any questions?
Seeing none, I, I would like to thank you for caring so much about this. And if I'm correct, our library has radon testing kits that can be checked out so people can test the radon in their homes, and I encourage everybody to do that.
Yes, and, and people can certainly contact us at Public Health if they have questions about what they can do to fix their homes and funding that's available. And, you know, what kind of contractors they can use to fix their homes, things like that.
That's great information. Thanks, Susan.
Thank you very much.
So moving on, it is now time for First Call Public Invited to be Heard. It's time to call in now if you want to be part of the Public Invited to be Heard. The information is being displayed on the screen. Please mute the livestream and dial in now. We'll take a five-minute break to give everyone time to get dialed in. But Dallas, we might have quite a few people who want to dial in. So if we go over that five-minute time threshold, let's just allow everyone to get in this time.
Absolutely. And I was advised to add that for those calling in about the Rivertown annexation item, that there will be another opportunity later on to call in for that specific item.
Oh, that's a great, that's a great mention. Thanks, Dallas.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Mayor Peck, we are about 15 seconds out from the five-minute mark, and I'm seeing we do have several callers in the queue.
Great. Well, let's get them all in.
Sounds good. Okay, we're at the five-minute mark. I am going to stop the slide share. And if you are ready, and once I see council is back on, I will get our first caller going.
Has, are there more people waiting to come in? Do you know, Dallas?
There, there are not. Nope, everyone has been accepted right now.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, let's, let's hear from them.
Great. I will lock the meeting. And for our first caller, caller, your last, the last three numbers of your phone are 755. Caller 755, would you please unmute? Caller 755, to unmute, it should be star six. Okay, we are going to go on to the next caller. We'll come back to 755. Caller 452, caller with the last three digits, 452 of their phone number, would you please unmute? Caller with the last three digits, 452, I'm asking you to unmute right now. That is star six on your device. Caller 452, we can hear you right now. Are you there?
Yes.
Perfect.
Sherri Malloy, 16.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sherri Malloy, okay. Sherri Malloy, 1632 Sherman Way, speaking to Rivertown. You've all said this property should be annexed into Longmont. So 10A1 is a yes vote with an amendment which I'll address shortly. 10A2 includes approval of the concept plan, which needs amending tonight to address council and the community's concerns. Several of you expressed legitimate concerns at first reading, and tonight is your only opportunity to direct staff and the applicant to make the necessary concept changes. Regarding annexation, 10A1, there is no access road on the Rivertown property. Therefore, if the property owner to the south refuses to allow a road, another possibility would be constructing one on open space property. amend Item 10A requiring the annexation agreement have a provision prohibiting building an access road on open face land on the west side of this property by Prairie Grounds Lake. Council continually discusses Longmont's need for housing where people could invest and build equity. You all agree that for purchased housing helps address the missing middle-type housing. For this proposal, four of the five of you present on December 17th agreed that rental was not the best housing space for this area. Three out of five expressed dislike at the high percentage of housing and questioned whether this complies with the intention of mixed-use employment zoning. 10A2 needs to be amended to address these two significant issues. As you know, this quarter has had 11 flood events, 11 flood events, and will flood again. Climate chaos is here. The wisdom of putting people and property in harm's way must be questioned. I have two other issues that warrant scrutiny for revision on this concept plan. First, the plan does not meet the code for compatibility with adjacent nature areas. Over half of Rivertown's border is R. Greenway and Rogers Grove Prairie Grounds Lake. The revision should require code be met to be designed to be complement the visual context of the natural area. It needs, therefore, it needs to include a multi-layered native buffer to protect sensitive neighboring areas from light, storm runoff, noise, and other human disturbance. Secondly, the northwest corner by Rivertown is one of the only nesting sites of bank swallows in Boulder County. A Boulder County species of special concern and declining species nationwide, bank swallows migrate thousands of miles to nest in the bank by the bridge. Proposed flood recovery calls for a split channel flow where their nests are destroying their habitat. The developer could demonstrate common faith, common good faith by respecting our community's values for habitat and wildlife protection by offering a conservation easement for the split-flow channel on their property so the bank flowers nesting area might be saved. Let's hope, let's hope they do just that. In the meantime, thank you for wrestling with these issues and enacting good policies which protect our community's values.
Okay. And going on to our next caller, caller with the last three digits, 708. Caller 708, would you unmute yourself, please? Caller with the last three digits of your phone number, seven-zero-eight, would you please hit star six on your keypad? Okay, I see it here.
Yeah.
Hey there, can you hear us? Oh, it appears you have just muted yourself again. Let me try that one more. Caller seven-zero-eight, there you are.
Hey, you're on?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello, this is Shelley, Shelley Bassman. We live at thirty-four seventeen Lakeview Circle in Longmont. Are you listening?
Yes, we are.
Oh, thank you. Okay, thank you for taking our call. And thank you for the opportunity to speak out about the river. We're concerned about the Rivertown application for annexation. That property is adjacent to Rogers Grove and next to the county nature ponds when Saint Brane River goes. But actually, we support Sherry Malloy's points a hundred percent, hundred and fifty, two-hundred percent. I understand that the developer wanted to put three hundred dwelling units on twenty acres. That's one dwelling unit for every one seven, every seven and one hundredth of an acre. And it was two people in each of those three hundred units. That's six hundred people, and if each person in those has a car, that's six hundred cars. This is totally incompatible. The highest and best use of this property would be as a, an extension of Rogers Grove, the nature ponds and the Saint Brane River and the nesting banks where the bank swallows nest. It absolutely, that proposal is, could have been submitted to somewhere in the nineteen-seventies. It'll have a clubhouse, it'll have, we never did say we were going to park all the cars. I did listen to that presentation, and I was appalled. That's, that's, that's not appropriate for twenty-twenty-two with the climate crisis. And, and I really do object for, to the taxpayer subsidizing someone who's obviously a pretty wealthy. I, I think the city should suggest a more appropriate spot would be down by the Longmont Hilton. They built right next to the sanitation department. And, and leave Rogers Grove, expand on Rogers Grove. I'm also suggesting that a moratorium be placed on annexations. And to give the city council time to upgrade our zoning and building code. Applicants presentation that I watched on, there wasn't a solar panel in sight, he never mentioned. They proposed putting townhouses right across from, not even a road from the ponds. Anyway, vote, I ask you to very respectfully to vote no. Dismissed?
Thank you, thank you, Shelley. You had three minutes, and we appreciate your comments. So thank you very much.
Okay. And next caller with the last three digits, eight-seven-six. And this is a reminder to everyone to mute your livestream and to, to be checking in through the phone. That's how you'll hear me if you're on the phone right now to make sure that you're getting the prompt to unmute. Okay, caller, we see you there. Hello?
This is Hermine Nomir. I'm at five twenty-four Flicker Avenue. Is it okay to briefly speak now?
Yes, Hermine, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. All right, appreciate it. I think this one's going to be fairly quick. And it's just a real ask for all of these projects that hopefully we will continue to see being proposed and come down into city council. We are very much in the need of housing in this space in all of Longmont. And I believe that there is a way to do it in such a way that we honor the beautiful piece of land that we've been given. But at the same time, don't use that as an excuse and a consistent excuse as to why we can't build there or anywhere else in this town. We've here for numerous years now, and some of the communications, every time I continue to hear another reason as to why we can't do a particular thing, and it comes down to the environment or comes down to noise or comes down to these other aspects. I wonder what is really going on, that some of us feel that others of us don't deserve to live here. So as you go through this and you decide on this project or subsequent ones, if you can still keep in mind that there are still some of us human beings that also deserve an opportunity to be here and would like to work in harmony with one another to figure out how we get to yes or how do we get to something that's of balance as opposed to just being exclusively no, thank you.
Thank you, Hermine.
Okay, and caller with the last three digits, seven-zero-six. Seven-zero-six, would you unmute right now?
Hello.
Hello.
Am I, am I live?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, very good. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Peck, and congratulations on your recent reelection, I guess, to the council. My name is Brian O'Brien, and we live at three-two-one Gay Street. And I, I just, I'm not sure of the format of your meetings. I hear people commenting about the new development, and I actually called in just for a question. I've been working well with the city manager on some traffic and parking issues. And I wanted to ask a question about the, seems like there's a little controversy come up on Third Avenue. It's a couple blocks from where we're at down by the West End Tavern. And see if this is an appropriate time to discuss the, the new parking regulations there.
So Brian, thank you for that question, but we do not interact on public invited to be heard. However, if you will leave your contact information with our city clerk or actually you can email or call me through the City of Longmont website, I would be glad to discuss this with you.
Yes, yes, ma'am, I sure appreciate that. And I want to say that having participated in many municipal meetings in my sixty years of being involved in civics and the towns that we've, we've lived in, I really appreciate the way that the town is handling this virtual engagement. I did get to see the beginning of the meeting with the Boulder County folks giving the information about the, the COVID pandemic that we're all enduring for so long now. And I want to say that the way that you accept citizens' calls by taking a five-minute break and making it easy instructions on how to dial in is a vast departure from some of the other municipalities that I've dealt with. I do appreciate it, and I will give you a call. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you for those comments.
Okay, and now we're going to go to caller six-two-five. Caller with the last three digits, six-two-five, could you unmute yourself, please? We can see you there. Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, good evening, Mayor Peck. And council members, Hildago Faring, Martin, Yarborough, and Waters. First of all, I want to give you a Happy New Year greeting. I know that there's been a lot to deal with, and I really appreciate all of the time that you have taken as we go through these difficult times. The Rivertown development is on today's agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, I need to say my name. I'm Virginia Black. And I live at two-six-oh-nine Elmhurst Circle in Longmont. So the Rivertown development is on today's agenda for a second reading, and I'm speaking to urge you to look more closely at this proposal before voting on it. I am concerned that its high proportion of residential use does not seem to comply with the Longmont Development Code Mixed Use Employment Zoning designation for this property. And that the high density of residences does not seem compatible with the natural areas that it will border. Please do take a closer look at the ratio of residences to places of employment and at the design along the waterway. Minimally, a multi-layered buffer of native landscaping between the waterway and the proposed buildings would protect both the human and wildlife inhabitants of this corridor. Thank you very much for your careful consideration of this proposal.
Thank you, Virginia.
Okay, and we're going to go on the caller with the last three digits, zero-nine-six. Caller zero-nine-six, if you are there, would you please unmute yourself?
Okay, hello?
Hello.
Hello, oh, we got this, all right. Good evening, council and staff. My name is Rick Jacoby, and I live at four-nineteen Collier Street. Item nine B on your agenda tonight is for rezoning a parcel on Highway one-nineteen across from the Sandstone Ranch. This is the homestead of Mary Dickens Allen. She was a proprietor of Browington Hotel and the St. Coach Stop and the wife of the very first settler of the Saint Brane Valley. Rezoning without any contingencies will permit the current owners to tear down the original home, barn, and outbuildings and replace them with a convenience store, taco outlet, and gas station. Recognizing the historic significance of the parcel, planning and zoning recommended approving the zoning change, but only if the owners made concessions agreed to by the Historic Preservation Commission. The wording from P and Z Minutes is recommending conditional approval of the rezoning with a second condition that the applicant shall develop a plan for preservation of the site's history with implementation in accordance with the Historic Preservation Commission and city staff. Well, as far as I know, the only suggestion from the property owners to address the historic aspects of the property has been to put up a plaque. The September ninth minutes for the Historic Preservation Commission show that they voted unanimously against the rezoning with this concession as it was felt to be grossly inadequate. Hold on a second, I'm, I'm having, here we go. There is a way around this loggerhead. At one point, the parcel was offered to the city by the property owners when many on city staff were unaware of the historic significance of the property. There may be still the possibility for the city to acquire this property, which meets criteria for the National Register of Historic Places. As you know, I have written you as a concerned citizen about all of this information, which is all on public record. I have also talked to David Bell, the director of Parks and Open Space, who is interested in looking into the possibility of acquiring the property if it's economically feasible to do so. But this has yet to be determined. It would be a shame to lose such an important piece of Longmont history at the gateway to our city if this could be prevented. So I would ask that you only approve the rezoning with the conditions recommended by planning and zoning or table the rezoning proposal until those conditions are met. I also respectfully suggest seeing if acquisition of the parcel by the city is feasible. Please remember, state and federal grants are available for help with rehabilitation costs of homestead buildings. At a minimum, don't abet the destruction of this historic homestead by changing the zoning without the contingencies recommended by planning and zoning. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Rick.
Okay, and we're going to go on to the next caller. Caller with the last three digits, seven-five-five. Caller seven-five-five, are you there?
I'm there.
Perfect, we can hear you.
Hello, Roland Herman, fifteen-twenty-one Red Mountain Drive here. I guess I was first up in the queue, but I was looking at the livestream and missed it. I want to thank all the members of council and the mayor for their service. I know it's a difficult job, and it's kind of a divided community nowadays, and your pay is ridiculously low. I want to weigh in on a couple issues, but for the record, I am pro-business development. We need jobs for residents. Growing local business is a priority for me. I'm pro-attainable housing. We need some entry-level housing for our workers. It's not rental housing, so we need more than just rental assistance. And I'm pro-environment. I realize the population of Longmont will continue to grow, but we need to do so responsibly and slowly. And we have a great character in our community. I've been here about eight years, and I really enjoy the community. And I want to ensure that Longmont is seen as a desirable place to live twenty-five years from now. And I'm not interested in becoming a mini Boulder. First, I guess, I'm a little unclear why the city council meetings went to four times a month to two. I think Longmont is booming, and times are challenging. I think we need more communication and public comment, not, not less. Regarding Riverton, I'm all for seeking the highest and best use for the development, balancing the image of the town, the need for jobs, and the environment. I'm truly concerned about the number of apartments that Longmont has built in the past decade. I'm from Arlington, Texas originally, a long time ago, and witnessed an apartment boom in the seventies and eighties. It really changed the character of the town, and now those apartments are getting, you know, forty, fifty years old. Some of the neighbors have really deteriorated, and the town in general has lost some of its prestige. I don't want that to happen to, to us here in Longmont. If we must build more condensed housing, I'd be more in favor of townhouses or possibly nicer condominiums, not apartments, and find a way to get people into those houses. I'd also like to, for any new high-density development or housing subdivisions require a certain percentage to be of attainable housing. So if this development in Riverton happens, we need to make sure there's some sustainable housing in there as well. I would like to see the space cleaned up, and we'd be okay for some kind of non-rental, not so high-dense housing there, as long as there's an ample buffer on the Saint Brane. I think for me, townhouses are the best option. And last but not least, I want to weigh in on the West Side Tavern issue. I think that we could clear that issue up by putting a three-way stop sign at the intersection of Third and Sherman North. I was just there for dinner on Saturday, and cars are flying down the road, and I'm parked on Sherman. So it's really like running the gauntlet to get through. I think we need to be aware that COVID has really impacted this business, and we need to be-
Roland, I, I hate to interrupt you, but there's a three-minute limit on public invited to be heard. But if you're interested in having that conversation, you can email either one of, any of us through the city website and our phone numbers there as well, if you would like to have one-on-one conversations. Thank you for your input. Do we have anything else, Dallas?
Yes, we have a couple more. All right, so caller with the last three digits, seven-six-five. Caller seven-six-five, if you are there, I can see you.
Hi.
Hello.
This is Anne Marie Jensen. I'm the director of the East County Housing Opportunity Coalition, which works in the communities east of Boulder to help create more affordable and attainable housing. And I'm here today to ask to thank you for the report further on down the agenda that includes recommendations for the use of American Rescue Plan Act dollars for affordable housing in a significant way. And we are really grateful for that. July of last year, we sent you a report along with Together Colorado, an interfaith organization, and made some recommendations to you, and it seems like you have adopted some of them, and we, we really appreciate that. But there are a few things that are not included in this, and they don't have to do with projects so much as they have to do with system improvements that we recommended that you could do that won't take very much- that we recommended that you could do that won't take very much money, but that could really help make the creation of more affordable housing easier in the community of Longmont, and create more housing stability for folks. And the first, I know, is on your agenda for this year, but we would like to suggest it needs to be done in an expedited manner with an outside consultant, and that is to look for efficiencies in the entitlement process and ways of reducing the time it takes to build housing. When margins are low, as they are on affordable housing, and even smaller attainable housing, and cash is tied up for many years, it discourages developers from building that housing in favor of other types where the margins are higher. So, if you hire an outside consultant who's familiar with building and planning processes elsewhere and can make suggestions for improvement, I think this is the best approach to cleaning up the entitlement process and making it more user-friendly. Another recommendation we made to you was to use an ombudsman's office for renters. As we're in the middle of a pandemic, and so, and we've seen the, you know, eviction moratorium go away, so many renters face eviction or lease termination because they don't understand the law, they don't have enough money for attorney, and they don't know what their options are. At least as a temporary measure during the pandemic, if you could help renters during this health hazard, you would prevent people from doubling and tripling up and spending time in ways that increase the spread of the virus. So, we would ask you to do that for renters in Longmont. And then lastly, Prosper Longmont, with the EVP, did a study that revealed that communities who had an ombuds person who worked with developers as a liaison between them and the city had significant reductions in delays in getting housing developed. And this can be an effective tool. I'm done. That's my last one.
Perfect timing.
So, I'm going to closing up. Yes. So, I vote to the extent of our recommendations, and we've, I've also emailed these to you guys, so you have them in your email box.
Thank you very much. How are we doing, Dallas?
We got one more, so we're moving on to our last caller. Caller with the last three digits, 999. Caller 999, would you please unmute yourself? Hey, caller 999, can you hear us?
Hi. Yes, I can. Thank you very much.
Excellent.
I just want to say thank you to council for, number one, hearing some of the concerns from Sherman Street and Third at the Coffee for Council meetings. My name is John Lockren at 220 Sherman. And I just wanted to share, my wife was driving home from work on, south on Francis, towards Third. She had been making a right, and then making another left, and going around the block for the longest time. And she was able to make a left on, from Francis on the Third, and then get onto Sherman, and she was, twice this week, she was very happy about that. So, I commend you on your efforts on our behalf. And I was able to look, Tyler suggested, the Longmont Leader, which showed the sightline criteria, which was used in putting some of the new changes into effect. And I was very grateful to be able to understand how that, you know, the reasoning for the extent of changes that were made. So, thank you very much, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thanks for those comments.
And that was our last caller.
Great. Those were good comments, actually. I enjoyed that. So, now we are going to our consent agenda, and Dawn, would you mind reading the items on the consent agenda into the record?
Absolutely, Mayor Peck. Item 9A is Ordinance 2022-01, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to execute a lease extension of real property known as 1140 Boston Avenue with Longmont Win Air Company. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for January 25, 2022. 9B is Ordinance 2022-02, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the Zlaton Commercial Center rezoning from NPE, non-residential, primary employment to PUD, Planned Unit Development, generally located at the northeast corner of State Highway 119 and Zlaton Drive. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for January 25, 2022. 9C is Resolution 2022-01, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for parent education services. 9D is Resolution 2022-02, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Town of Lyons for electric standby distribution service by Longmont Power and Communications. 9E is Resolution 2022-03, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives for firing range and training center use. 9F is Resolution 2022-04, a resolution of the Longmont City Council, pardon me, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Longmont and the Colorado Department of Transportation for state funding for asphalt rehabilitation along US 287 from 11th Avenue to 15th Avenue. 9G is Resolution 2022-05, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado for grant funding from the Colorado Arts Relief Program through the Colorado Creative Industries. And 9H is designate the city's website as the official posting location for city council meeting notices for 2022 meetings.
Thank you, Dawn. I can see that Counselor Martin would like to pull an item. Counselor Martin?
Yes, I would like to pull 9B, please.
Okay. Are there any other items that councillors would like to pull? So, Counselor Martin, would you like to move the consent agenda then?
Yes, I move the consent agenda excluding item 9B.
Do I have a second? Okay. So, the consent agenda has been moved by Counselor Martin, is seconded by Counselor Waters. All those, let's vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed. That carries unanimously. So, let's move on then to the ordinances on second reading and public hearings of any. It is time now to call, if anybody wants to speak on these items on second reading, now is the time to call in for that. We're going to take another five-minute break to give everyone time to get dialed in. Dallas, can you put the information on the screen? The dialing, and there you go. So, we'll take another five-minute break, and we'll, Dallas, as per the last call, let's make sure everybody gets in before we close the window for that. So, we'll see you in five minutes.
Mayor Peck, we are approaching the five-minute mark. I am seeing a couple callers in the chat.
Okay, um, let's, uh, so everybody's in, is that what you're saying, Dallas?
Yes, everyone has been admitted, and we are at the five-minute mark. If you would like me to start, uh, actually for this one.
I would.
Yes.
So, let's have our first caller.
So, Mayor, if I can just interject for one moment. If we are going to start with item 10A, Rivertown, we just need to read the items into the record first.
Of course, Dawn.
I'm happy to do that if you'd like me to, but you can also...
Yes, and it looks like we have not only that one, but we have B as well.
Correct. Yeah, and then, then when you open the hearing, we can take the speakers.
Thank you. Go ahead.
You're welcome. Item 10A1 is Resolution 2022-06, a resolution finding a parcel of land known as the Rivertown Annexation, generally located north of Boston Avenue and west of Sunset Street at 21 South Sunset Street, eligible for annexation. And it, number two, is Ordinance 2021-78, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the Rivertown Annexation and Concept Plan, generally located north of Boston Avenue and west of Sunset Street at 21 South Sunset Street, and zoning the property MUE, Mixed-Use Employment. Public hearing and second real, that is today. There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Dallas, if we have anybody that would like to speak on these issues, we do have a presentation by Ava Pajewski. I think I got that right. So, I would like that presentation first. So, Ava, are you ready to give your presentation?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Peck and council members. Ava Pajewski, Principal Planner, Planning and Development Services. Dallas, could you please cue up the staff presentation? And I am joined by Glenn Van Nemwegen, our Planning Director. He'll be taking some slides as well. So, this is, again, the Rivertown Annexation before us tonight. Next slide, please. Thank you. Again, just to give you some background, I'm sure you are all aware where it is. This is 21 South Sunset Street. It's about a 21-acre parcel on the west side of Sunset Street. It is immediately east of the Rogers Grove Nature Area and is immediately south of the Saint Rain Creek, and slightly abuts Boston Avenue toward the south. There's some parcels, zone primary employment just south of it. It's designated on our city's comprehensive plan as mixed-use employment. And so, for those of you who aren't familiar with the annexation process, we have, you know, we have our zoning map, right, and our zoning designations, and then we have the city's overall comprehensive plan called Envision Longmont. And in the zoning map, we only have properties zoned that are inside city limits. In our comprehensive plan, we do designate potential zonings of properties that could be annexed into the city, as well as obviously the city, the parcels that are in the city. In this particular instance, this is designated as mixed-use employment, and the applicant is requesting mixed-use employment, which is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Next slide. And so, just in general, again, just to remind everyone through this process, this is not a site-specific development plan, meaning, you know, we wouldn't have construction crews out there. This is not an imminent development. What this is, is a generalized concept plan of what in the future could be applied for as a land development application if it were annexed into the city. And so, as you can see here, they're looking at some type of mixed-use development. Generally speaking, they're looking at about 20,000 square feet of commercial on the east side of the property, abutting Sunset Street, and an access point into the site off of Sunset Street. They're looking at about half an acre of amenities, which, again, this is all general. We don't have specifics, but amenities adjacent to the Saint Rain Creek. And the applicant is here, and I'm sure they can, you know, answer those questions you may have about what those amenities are. And the remainder would be residential development, as has been noted earlier. And that includes some townhomes, sort of less density right against the Rogers Grove Nature Area on the west side, and then 380 units approximately of apartments kind of toward the center of this. There are also proposed, again, conceptual access points off of Boston Avenue. You see the red arrows there. Those parcels abutting Boston Avenue are currently in city limits. They are planted lots, and on those subdivision plots, there is an access easement at those two locations that's planted through those properties that could potentially provide secondary access. And so, when we talk about the land uses that are allowed in the Mixed-Use Employment Zoning District, these are secondary uses, the residential component. However, I know that there's been some talk among, you know, some of the constituency that this is not an allowed use, but that is an erroneous statement. This isn't allowed use as a secondary use in the Mixed-Use Employment Zoning District. And so, when we look at primary uses and secondary uses, and Glenn's going to jump on the next slide, but when we talk about those type of things, we don't take it on a parcel-by-parcel basis. We take it on a district, a zoning district basis. And so, we've got some slides to share with you to show you the whole picture of the Mixed-Use Employment Zone in this area, and how we classify primary and secondary uses. Next slide. And so, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Glenn Van Nemwegen, our Planning Director, who's going to talk to you about secondary uses in our code and how city planning interprets secondary uses in zoning district, and then I'll finish up. Glenn?
Thank you, Ava, and thank you, Mayor Peck and council members. I appreciate an opportunity to talk about this. As we can see, I think there's questions with our residents, as well as with our planning committee. As, um, we can see, I think there's questions with our residents, um, as well as with our planning commission recently. And that's why I wanted to give a little bit of clarification of what the code says about secondary uses and how we apply it. On October 27th, um, we had about a two-hour study session with our planning commission, going over the history of how we got to this point. We've had some ups and downs in Longmont as far as how you implement a mixed-use district. But at the end of the day, we adopted Envision Longmont, which stated how you create, um, connected nodes, um, active districts, and reduce vehicle trips is by getting housing particularly close to commercial uses and employment areas. So, um, the code followed up and was amended, creating mixed-use employment, mixed-use corridor, mixed-use regional retail. Um, I think those are our main three mixed-use, um, districts. So this is what the code states, as, uh, shown on the slide. Um, uh, section 15.04030 talks about three, um, specific criteria for adopting secondary uses. I might add that the code has three tiers of allowed uses within any of the mixed-use districts. Number one is just a straight-out permitted use, so in employment, certainly a light industrial use, an office use would be, um, just a straight across allowed use within that district. Um, uh, at the top of the tier is conditional uses. There are some specific uses where, um, our code states that, um, the planning commission needs to take a closer look at that use in that particular district. And then in the middle is secondary uses, so that has these three criteria that staff must look at in approving any kind of secondary use, and in this case, that, um, has to do with the rezoning. It's ultimately councils, um, look at as well. So, um, the first two, um, criterias is number one, that the secondary use is of a scale and design that's compatible with the surrounding uses, and that we mitigate any potential adverse impacts, and the code has a number of sections of how we do that. Number two, the secondary use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the intent of the underlying zoning district. I talked a little bit about the goals of the mixed-use districts. But the third criteria is the one I think people kind of focus on, and that is that a secondary use, as proposed, will not substantially diminish the availability of land within the underlining zoning district for primary uses, or reduce the availability of land for primary uses below a minimum level necessary to meet the intent of the district. And so, um, what staff has done is it's a bit of an art and a science, so you try and locate secondary uses where they make sense, where they potentially might be a buffer to some existing neighborhoods. Um, and then also, we apply a, uh, a mathematical number that substantially diminish, we take kind of conservative look at that, and it cannot be, a secondary use cannot be greater than 50% of the district. So how do we define district? And Dallas, if you could progress the slides, one.
Are you seeing it on your end?
There, now I am.
Okay.
Awesome. So I want to show you an example. Basically, what, um, the less than 50% is applied to the district that's contiguous. Um, and that kind of relates back to the comprehensive plan. We put these, um, districts in areas that made sense from a land use standpoint and are well-connected. So this is an area, uh, I wanted to show this example of the Creekside Development. I think, um, the planning commission and council, um, worked on the project. We know it is 1901 South Hoover. That's the area that is, um, on the left-hand side of your screen, includes 19 acres of a mixed-use commercial and multifamily development project. Um, also, it provides middle-tier housing, but when you look at the whole district, um, we have 73 acres, we have, uh, two acres of undeveloped land, 37 acres of office-like industrial, um, uses. Uh, 14 and a half acres, it's a high-density, uh, senior living facility, and another 19-acre mixed-use, um, and that the previous project I talked about of the mixed-use, high-desident, uh, the high-density residential use. So in this case, we're kind of close, we're at about 46% of the overall land area devoted to secondary uses. So using this going forward with the subject site, if you can hit the next slide, Dallas, we'll talk specifically about Rivertown. So it's, as, uh, Ava pointed out, in the mixed-use employment zoning district, it is a multi-family residential, is a permitted secondary use. Um, so we look at the contiguous, multi-use employment area. And this, uh, in this case, it extends down Boston Avenue to, to Pratt Street. It includes a total of 117 acres. Um, this is the only multifamily portion that's a part of this district, so it's 18 acres divided by 117, about 15% of the mixed-use, um, employment area is devoted to multifamily. So well below that middle point. Um, the other thing I want to point out from a land use standpoint is, um, the, the area where this residential is going is very close to those gray area land uses that are primary employment. There's no residential allowed in that area. So, um, from a staff standpoint, I think we feel not only does it serve the horizontal district, but it serves the area around this site where there's a lot of employment, um, concentrated. So that in a nutshell is how we apply the secondary uses. Um, the planning commission, basically reaffirmed that they feel we're doing it the right way, and, um, it makes a lot of sense and it retains the flexibility. But we told them we'll continue to look at a better way to do it. So, uh, one way might be as we, i-if we get into the comp plan in the future, maybe paint a better picture of what we want these mixed-use districts to become. Um, and we'll take it from there. So that's really all I wanted to add in, and I'll turn it back over to Ava to get into the particulars and the, um, the amount of, uh, public outreach for the project.
All right, thanks Glenn. Uh, Dallas, can you go to the next slide? Thank you. Uh, so I just want to give you a little bit of background, uh, it was, it was in the staff report, it was in the planning commission report. Again, um, you know, some concerns and, and some background on this property. Again, it's adjacent to Saint Rain Creek on its north side. Um, some things that council should understand. Couple things, uh, the property owner, you know, again, this isn't a development plan, it's annexation. Um, and so it's, and within the annexation agreement, the property owner is obligated, uh, to dedicate land as, as necessary and determined by Public Works for channel widening for the Resilient Saint Rain Flood Control Project. In addition, um, after they dedicate the land for the channel widening, wherever that property line moves south, then they will be required to dedicate Greenway. Um, in addition, um, whatever they build on the property would have to maintain a 150-foot riparian setback from the edge of the creek. Um, and again, as, as we've noted previously, you know, we, we did get a cursory environmental analysis. They didn't identify any habitat for federal or state-protected species or plants. Again, this is annexation, it's not a project, so if we were to get a project application in, uh, we would have to ask for a brand-new survey. Um, and I know there were concerns raised about the timing of the survey. Again, uh, we could, we could always require them to, to have them do it, um, in the spring or in the summer. There's nothing in our municipal code that dictates to, uh, a property owner what time of year they can repair these, uh, environmental reports. Um, in addition, um, there's eagles nearby, uh, but there's no habitat at this location for nesting. Um, the property is in the floodway, and that would require, um, a conditional letter of map revision from FEMA. Again, this is probably years down the road, um, there's a couple ways this can be resolved. The owner can spend the money on their own dime and do this, uh, floodplain mitigation to get out of the floodplain in order to be, uh, able to develop. The city would never permit any development on this property in the floodplain. Um, or the property owner, if they don't want to spend their own investment, they could wait for the Resilient Saint Rain Project to, you know, finish those improvements as they move upstream. Um, but that project isn't fully funded yet, so that could be several years. So development is not necessarily imminent in this case. Um, one advantage to annexing this property, I, I would remind council, is that it does put this property into our jurisdiction. Um, at the moment, it's in Boulder County's, um, and so it gives us greater control. It allows us to get the permitting done on our end and so forth. Um, and again, as you've seen in the aerial maps, it was formerly, uh, concrete batch plant. Uh, we've had some environmental, uh, reports looked at, um, no evidence of any environmental, uh, issues on the site. Next slide. Uh, again, just, uh, just a reminder in terms of the community input we've been soliciting, uh, we had a neighborhood meeting uh, in November of 2020, uh, we've had, um, we sent out notices when the application was submitted in January of 2021. Uh, we sent out notices with the public hearing for planning and zoning as well as for this meeting. Um, and you have received the comments, uh, that you have received. I know in your email box, um, we obviously have gotten mixed messages, we've gotten, um, people who are expressing deep concerns about the environmental impacts, and we've also gotten emails, uh, expressing support. And next slide. Uh, and so this went to Planning and Zoning Commission, a few months ago, um, they made a re-recommendation of conditional approval. Um, what that was about was, uh, the concept plan had set a certain amount of units on it, and, uh, then there was a traffic study that was associated with it, and it had a different number. Um, they didn't quite match, they were in the 300s, but they weren't exactly, uh, the same, and so, um, the planning commission just asked that, uh, the concept plan be updated to have the higher density that was shown in the traffic study, and that has been done, and that's the concept plan in front of you. Um, so that is the correct amount, which is 334 dwelling units. And, um, next slide. And so I'm going to turn this over to David Starnes, who has a presentation on behalf of the property owner, but before I do that, just want to introduce or let you know, we do have staff here to answer questions. If you have questions about, um, the environmental studies that were done, uh, any environmental concerns, we have David Bell and Dan Wolford from Natural Resources here, and we also have our Environmental Sustainability Planner um, on our team, Hannah Mulroy's here. Uh, if you have questions about, you know, the traffic, the accesses, utilities, anything of that nature, uh, we have Chris Huffer from Public Works Engineering, the Public Works Engineering Administrator is here to answer, uh, those questions. And with that, I will turn it over to David Starnes. Um, they have a brief presentation, and then if council has any questions, we're all happy to answer. Thank you.
David? You're up, you're up next.
But you're on mute.
I'm mute.
If, uh, just going forward, if anyone needs to speak, just feel free to raise your hand and I'll be able to click the button quicker. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Dallas. Um, good evening, Mayor Peck and Council, I'm David Starnes with the Rivertown Development Group. I'm gonna give a brief presentation and actually turn it over to Tony D. Simone from Confluence. Um, in just a few minutes, he will provide some additional commentary on our development group and project experience and, um, concept for this Rivertown redevelopment. Uh, Dallas, if you'd bring up our presentation, please. Uh, thank you, next slide. So a-as Ava had mentioned, um, you know, our site, again, is a 21-acre site, um, located coincidentally at 21 South Sunset Street, so we're in Boulder County, the existing uses are office, warehouse, and some vacant land um, behind the, um, industrial buildings. The current zoning in Boulder County is general industrial, and as Ava had mentioned, our proposed zoning aligns with Envision Longmont on the land use designation of mixed-use employment. Next slide. Um, current conditions on the site, you know, it's a blighted property, it's a former, you know, concrete batch plant. Um, it's an enclave parcel, we're essentially surrounded by the city in all directions, except for the, probably just the north and then a portion to the, um, east. Um, but we are more or less entirely surrounded by the city. Um, our property, our, our goal is to, you know, really transform this bladed area, bladed area into a, a high-quality mixed-use development that will be a desirable place for, for people to live and to work, you know? The existing property, if you look on the backside of our property, is dominated by the former batch plant, you know, large concrete bla, uh, blocks. There's no environmental conditions that were identified, but again, these are not desirable uses or appealing uses that we feel. Next slide, please. Our proposed redevelopment is consistent with the, uh, comprehensive plan. Um, within the comprehensive plan, um, it's one of the, the site is located within the Saint Rain Creek focus areas, and this is one of four key areas identified by the city in the comp plan with the greatest opportunity for future development. And our goal really is to revitalize what we call this River District Corridor. Um, as, you know, improvements to the floodplain are made, to really make this a desirable area for people to live and to work. And as identified in the goal of the comp plan, the integration of high-density res-residential uses and support services are encouraged um, within the MUE designation. Also to expand housing options, um, within the city and to leverage, what we hope is planned transit investments with the BRT corridor. Next slide, please. Um, the Rivertown redevelopment will incorporate, you know, meeting that, that's the residential, um, um, rental apartments and townhomes in a wide, in a variety of employment spaces. We actually been in contact with, um, number of small businesses um, who are in Longmont who are looking to expand and are, you know, desire to locate into a modern kind of flex business space, and that's something that we're willing to entertain. And obviously, work closely with these businesses, um, to create opportunities for them to stay in Longmont, to grow and to provide additional, um, employment opportunities. Um, our goal, and again, this would be part of our site plan application, is, you know, as part of the, a-after annexation, um, we'll come forth with a detailed, um, site plan that will outline what the buildings would look like. Um, again, our, our plan is to have them aesthetically consistent, um, with the adjacent area um, in terms of a high-quality residential housing, um, and, um, commercial opportunities. Next slide, please. And I just want to kind of show this quick slide, this is, um, what we call the River District. Um, you know, we've been doing some visioning, um, with adjacent business owners and property owners to kind of really look at reinvigorating this, what we feel is a very vital and important area in the city, um, that's been neglected for a long time, having Left-Ham Brewery there. Brewery in this area has been really critically important to kind of activating, um, Saint Rain Creek, providing a destination, and we feel, you know, with our Rivertown redevelopment, this could be an opportunity to really introduce some residential and commercial in an area that doesn't have any residential. Um, just catty corner from our 21 South Sunset, early this year, we had, um, actually, well, last year now, in 2021, um, we had our six and a half acres of our initial phase of Rivertown annexed into the city, where we're contemplating and going through a process of, um, flex commercial space that's modern and adaptable. Um, again, to provide opportunities for businesses, um, to stay and grow in Longmont. Next slide, please, and with that, I'll turn it over to Tony D. Simone from Confluence.
Tony, if you're there, could you raise your hand? I'm trying to find you in the list of participants.
Just need to unmute your mic, Tony.
Yes, Tony, if you are there and can raise your hand, I'll be able to unmute you.
He's under Anthony.
Gotcha.
D. Simone.
Mm-hmm.
There we go.
All right, thank you, uh, appreciate that. Thank you, David, and, and thank you, City Council. Certainly appreciate your stamina tonight, um, to work through. Certainly appreciate your stamina tonight, um, to work through this. My name is Tony D. Simone. I'm one of the owners of Confluence Companies. And just appreciate the opportunity to present tonight. Uh, we're part of that ownership team and really grateful for the opportunity to rethink the use of this former concrete batch plant. And I, I really want to focus on the word opportunity because I think tonight we have an opportunity to really kind of rethink what's out there now. Change a concrete batch plant into a vibrant mixed-use community and really meet some of the community needs that so many people have been talking about. Um, so we're excited about this. The main focus I know tonight is really to consider the merits, uh, of the property for annexation. I also want to make sure you understand the quality of the team that's behind this. And, um, I think it's important for you to know that we're local. We're a, we're a Golden-based developer builder and property manager. You know, we only work on a handful of sites a, a year that really meet our high expectations. And we believe this site, uh, meets those expectations. It will be a long haul. It's, it's not an easy project, as Ava mentioned, so. But, um, but we're, uh, we're excited about it. So, uh, we have experience, uh, redeveloping blighted sites, working in wetlands, environmentally sensitive areas. And, um, I want you to know, our motto is creating exceptional places, and you'll see some of those exceptional places on the slide there in front of you. And we've also given Ava, uh, a list of our references, you know, both in municipalities and working with lenders. And I encourage you to reach out to those so you understand, uh, how hi- how high quality that reputation is in the marketplace. I also encourage you to visit any of these properties to see, uh, the high-quality delivery and experience that you'll get onsite. Um, so thank you. Next slide. So, um, this slide really addresses the comprehensive plan, envision Longmont. There's a lot of words on this slide. I, I'm not going to focus on line by line, all those. I just want you to understand, we have two pages here uh, of goals that we feel like we meet with a future development here and, and worthy of that annexation. The gist of this slide also, I want you, want to focus on the pictures on the right. Those are actual photos from, uh, project we can, project we completed in two thousand nineteen in Arvada called Timberline Farms, and it's, um, it's certainly precedent image imagery of what we're trying to deliver here in Longmont. Um, it's a really respectfully, uh, well-done property on a very similar site. The site is twenty acres. It was a, uh, former industrial yard as well, and very similar condition of what we have here today. Um, but what you'll see in those images is we've created these, these wonderful opportunities to gather these community gardens. We're very respectful to the adjacent open spaces and trail systems. And, um, it's, you know, it's just a great opportunity to create something special here. So, next slide. Next slide, Dallas. Okay, great. Thank you. Um, so we also, you know, we're looking at a mix of uses here. Uh, this side is a little bit focused more on the commercial side of things. You know, with the last two years of COVID, the workforce has changed dramatically. You know, we've gone from these, uh, large corporate centers in, in big cities, and it shifted the workforce more towards the suburban community. So, people working from home or want to be closer to home. And so there's been this big shift to the suburbs, which, you know, has been good. It's kept people close to home, but, uh, it's also brought the demand for housing and the demand for, for modern workspaces. So, for us, this is an opportunity to create a really um, kind of modern workspace that's close to home. This project, we're really focused on creating a community center. It's a place, um, uh, where we will bring most likely our, our craft co-working brand, where people can rent or buy office space there. They'll be able to walk to work, bike to work, grab a coffee, lunch, hang out for a happy hour. Um, but it's, it's kind of what the market's craving now. It's just to be closer to home and have those experiences and have that walkability in the suburbs. But, um, it, you know, in total, we're planning on, uh, investing about a hundred million dollars, um, into Longmont with this community. So, uh, just an exciting opportunity. Next slide. So, one of the things that's in addition to our presentation, we did a planning commissions, is this housing needs slide. And, um, I apologize, we had a, a site plan on here, it's not on here, but I'll talk you through the different things. There's some some truly amazing statistics today that I want you to be aware of, if you're not. Um, I think they're important to, uh, to consider as we look at the site. Currently, we're seeing fifty thousand people a year move to Colorado. We're not building enough housing to satisfy that demand. Um, we recently completed a market study specifically for this location. What that market study showed is that Longmont can expect to see as many as twenty-five thousand new residents over the next thirteen years. Um, you know, households are also getting smaller. Sixty-two percent are one and two-person households now compared to fifty-five percent thirty years ago. Baby boomers are aging. They're looking for, uh, lower maintenance living. Young professionals are waiting longer to have children, so they're not living in traditional housing. And I know we've had a lot of talk about the missing middle. And that's where that comes in, that, that image to the upper right-hand corner. I know it may be hard to read, but uh, it shows you those variety of housing types that handle the missing middle. And when we talk about missing middle, it's not just for sale housing, it's also for rent housing, because in a lot of ways, the for rent housing can be more affordable than for sale housing. Um, you know, from a developer's perspective, it has to do with the financing mechanisms that allow that housing to be built. But it's really difficult in today's world to deliver affordable housing because of construction costs, municipal fees, taxes. There's a whole reason why, but the, the beauty of doing a mixed-use site where you can have varying levels of density, it allows your higher-density product to subsidize the lower-density product and make that attainable and affordable. And so that's why, um, uh, when you look at that site plan and how you have these different uses, it allows us to deliver that attainable housing that is so needed in the market today. So, I know we, uh, we received a lot of letters of support, uh, you know, through the annexation process. One I want to call upon, uh, was written by Eric Wallace, the president of Left-Ham Brewing. And I thought Eric said it best. He said, "Addressing the housing crisis is the number one issue impacting the long-term sustainability and economic viability of Longmont." "The negative impact of the housing crisis on my family and my business is why I agreed to help start Prosper Longmont." I couldn't agree more, and, you know, as a business owner, um, with nearly a hundred employees as well, we have a lot of our employees living at our communities because they're attainable. And without that attainable product in your community, your businesses will suffer. Um, and we've seen that over and over again. So, um, I did want to point you to that, uh, site plan, but I don't have it here. So, let me, let me work towards the next slide if I can. Okay, so, um, so, you know, in conclusion, um, we just want to bring up that, look, the site's identified for annexation. It satisfies a lot of the goals in Envision Longmont. We know that the site's currently blighted. It's, it's really well-suited for, um, for redevelopment. The current use, as I mentioned, is a concrete batch plant. And, um, we just have such an amazing opportunity. You know, the alternative Ava kind of mentioned, if it's not annexed into Longmont, uh, we could work through the process through Boulder County. That's an option. We can currently leave it as an industrial use. And, uh, but I would argue, you know, both of those routes are not better for the site. It, it will not help the environment around it. I think having that, um, that, that lower density as we approach, uh, those native areas will actually be helpful. There is also the repairing setback. I don't have the map, but you'll see that we're not building to the property borders. Um, we're respecting that. There's a hundred and fifty-foot repairing setback that sets back into our site, and so we're very respectful of that. And, um, we know, uh, this site can be a really good neighbor. So, with that, we'll, uh, we'll open it for questions. Thank you.
Do any counselors have questions at this point? I do. Tony, uh, thank you for those slides, and you, you do, you do build beautiful places. I agree. Uh, what I wish that we could, you had a picture of is, how do you actually build, uh? Aaron, uh, Mayor Potim?
I just want to make sure that we do have two items here, and they're both very different. I believe most of this presentation has been more for the second item than the first item. So, I, I do want to make sure that
I agree.
If, if we're gonna, if we're gonna open everything up, that we, we do it appropriately. So, I, I, that's just, I want to clarify where we're at. Sorry.
Okay. I thank you for that, but I am going to ask my question. So, what I wish that you had, as you know, we are very concerned about, uh, the environment. Just, you don't have to answer this. It would be really helpful to have some kind of a description or picture of how you actually treat, uh, rivers and lake corridors. So, that's it. Going forward, I would like to see if you have ever developed around an actual river or creek.
Or I can answer that real quick if that's okay. You know, the project that I brought up, and, you know, I would encourage, we'll be happy to set up a visit, but um, it's called Timberline Farms in Arvada. It, it, it is adjacent to Van Bieber Creek. We actually, part of the project required us to reroute part of that, um, area. So, we're very familiar with working in that type of environment and respecting, um, you know, those settings. So, I think it's a really good example that we can, we can show you.
Thank you. All right. So, that's, uh, let's keep going. Ava, is there any more to this presentation, or are we, is that it?
Uh, Mayor Peck, that's correct. So, uh, staff and the applicant have both, uh, completed their presentations. Uh, we're available to answer questions. And just to clarify, there's two items on the table. One is a resolution of statutory compliance. That's not, uh, the formal annexation of this property. It's a state statute requirement that says this property is eligible to be annexed because it meets all the requirements of contiguity with City of Longmont boundaries. And then the ordinance is the actual, you know, approving the, the land to be annexed into the city.
Correct. Thank you for, uh, restating that. So, can I have a motion for the resolution R. two thousand twenty-two oh six? To move that forward. Uh, Counselor Martin.
Yeah, I will move the resolution R. I can't see it. My screensaver kicked in. Uh, I'll move it, um, just for procedural clarification. This one is a resolution and doesn't need the public hearing, but then the
Correct.
the public hearing will be on the second one. Is that correct, or do they both need a public hearing?
I think that, I think, uh, we, we do have a, you're correct. You're correct. I just reread it. You're correct that there is no public hearing on this resolution. There's only one on the ordinance. So, you made the motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. So, uh, R. two thousand twenty-two oh six, the resolution, finding a parcel of land known as River Town Annexation has been moved by Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Waters. Let's vote. Oh, excuse me. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed. So, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. So, uh, let's go on to, uh, zero twenty twenty-one seventy-eight. A bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the River Town Annexation and Concept Plan, generally located north of Boston Avenue and west of Sunset Street at twenty-one South Sunset Street. And zoning the property M U E, mixed-use employment, public hearings, and second reading scheduled for January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. Do we have any kind of a presentation on this, or did your first presentation cover everything? It seemed to.
No, that's correct. It did. That, that was really the intent.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, so I'd like to open the public hearing for zero twenty twenty-two seventy-eight.
Right. If there are any callers, uh, that are currently in the chat that would like to speak on this item, please hit star nine to raise your hands. If you hit star nine, that's how we'll know. Perfect. Okay, I'm seeing three hands right now, so keep them raised. I'm going to start with the first caller at the very top. This is caller with the last three digits, zero seven three. Caller zero seven three, can you unmute for me?
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, yes, we can.
Hey, uh, Mayor Peck, City Council members, good evening. I'm Nadine Lester, fifteen seventeen Mayfield Lane. I'm a member of Stand With Our Saint Brain Creek. At your December fourteenth regular session, council shared concerns about the River Town Concept Plan as you debated said River Town Annexation Ordinance. Please translate those concerns into action. If you will separate the concept plan from the annexation ordinance and send it back to the drawing board, you'll give the city and the community an opportunity to address the very concerns you yourselves raised in discussion last month. We need a development on the River Town property that's a good neighbor to our Rogers Grove nature area. We don't need ninety percent of the acreage dedicated to high-density rental apartments. And we really do need more mid-tier for-sale housing in Longmont so folks can buy a home and build their net worth, but not more rentals like what's proposed in the River Town Concept Plan. If big employers in this town are worried about affordable housing for their employees, maybe they should use their clout to work with our state legislature, revising the construction defects laws that discourage developers from building the so-called missing-middle housing like affordable condos and townhomes around here. Let's be realistic. Rental apartments crowded onto a property that isn't zoned residential and that in point of fact, doesn't even have an access road, this is not a housing solution. It's a half-baked idea. And constructing these buildings will undermine the natural areas and habitats right next door to them. That's why even considering using the public's open-spaceland to create an access road onto this private development is just plain unfair to the citizens of Longmont. We all enjoy Rogers Grove, and we all pay to maintain open space. Please, let's not destroy the things our community treasures by giving them away to private interests. I'm convinced that some forethought on the city's part and some consideration on the part of the developer can produce a much better concept plan. So, send this one back to the drawing board tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Nadine.
All right, and we're going to go on to our next caller. This is, ooh, I think we just lost you. Caller, uh, with the last three digits, three, two, three. Hi, caller three, two, three. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Uh, my name is Jamie Simo, and I live, live at ten twenty Venice Street. Uh, Mayor Peck and council members, thank you for letting me speak tonight. As you've already heard, the River Town Concept Plan must go back to the drawing board. I will briefly reiterate that any housing in this area is not likely to be the workforce or affordable housing Longmont is in need of. Since two thousand sixteen, Longmont saw two thousand one hundred and fifty-four new apartment units built. Longmont is first in number of apartments built in all of Colorado. But what I really want to talk about tonight, however, are Longmont's bank swallows. The bank swallow is a small migratory songbird that nests in vertical banks. It requires a very specific substrate and bank slope, without which it is not able to nest. Bank swallows are a Boulder County species of special concern, and Longmont's own Wildlife Management Plan, W M P, which was just revised in two thousand nineteen, lists the bank swallow as one of the species that increases Longmont's biodiversity. The W M P notes colonial nesters, of which bank swallows are one, are of quote-unquote "special interest" because an action that affects one nest may simultaneously affect many others. Bank swallows are also a highly migratory, rare, and specialized species, traits specifically noted in the W M P of species that deserve special protection. Rogers Grove is one of the only known places in Boulder County and the only place on Longmont-protected land where bank swallows nest. The nesting site is just on the other side of the pedestrian bridge from the River Town property. While Longmont's flood mitigation project in the area of Rogers Grove isn't yet fully funded, the favored plan is to construct a split-flow channel running under Hoover Street. Unfortunately, this channel would destroy this valuable and rare natural habitat. Given how specialized the bank swallows' nesting conditions are, it would likely be impossible to create a suitable replacement habitat elsewhere. I again ask that as a condition of annexation, a conservation easement be placed on River Town property so that the construction of the split-flow bypasses the bank swallow colony. If this cannot be done, Natural Resources needs to come up with another way to prevent the destruction of this area. Thank you for your time consideration.
Thank you, Jamie. Looks like we have one more caller.
That is correct. Yes. Caller with the last three digits, nine, four, nine. You can unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hi, can you hear us?
Yes.
Excellent.
This is Ruby Bowman, fifteen twelve Love Ten Drive. I have the following concerns about the Rivertown Annexation. One zoning, the intent of the mixed use employment zoning is to promote primary employment. However, the Rivertown Concept Plan shows ninety percent of the property will be used for high density residential, a secondary use. Current code states a second you, secondary use is not intended to be a primary or predominant use in a zoning district. City should not reinterpret the code in order to facilitate allow the facilitation of the Rivertown Concept Plan, which is in violation of the proposed designated zoning. Two, review criteria. One of the, one of the criteria requires that development be compatible with surrounding properties in terms of land use, site, building layout, design, and access. Planning staff claim Rivertown meets this criterion because the nature areas would provide a quiet and peaceful setting for the residential buildings. In other words, the Rivertown residents will get to enjoy singing birds in Rogers Grove. But what about us, the users, the ones who already live here and invested in these nat- nature areas? When will the city credibly assess the impacts of high density residential on our wildlife and our enjoyment of wildlife in Rogers Grove and St. Brain Creek? Seems as if staff interpreted this criterion so that it benefits the developer. Three, access road. At the planning zoning public hearing, city staff promoted the idea of building an access road. On city county open space in the event the property owner to the south of Rivertown refused access on her property. Who gave staff the authority to put this option on the table of con- of conveying Rogers Grove property to the to benefit private development? Terry and I found out that Natural Resources did not even know about this option. To build an access road for everyday use next to Fairground Lake. Again, city staff promoted the idea for the benefit of the developer. Four, conflicts of interest. At the an- annexation public and zoning hearing. A commissioner revealed that the Rivertown developer was a client of hi- of his, but he did not recuse himself. City policy allows a commissioner to decide for himself whether he has a conflict of interest. Other words, the policy kicks the door open for possible corruption on our commission. This has got to change.
Thank you, Ruby. Is that our last caller, Dallas?
Yes, that is the last caller.
Okay, do we have any remarks by council? Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Uh, I guess it's time to get us started here because this seems like it'll be a fairly substantial conversation.
Yes.
Um, first of all, few questions. It seems to me in our code that annexation requires a concept plan. And so I'd like to get a answer from possibly legal or planning and development, whether an annexation can be severed from a concept plan and still be accepted.
Uh, council member or Mayor Pro Tim, um, severed? Meaning how?
As in, we can accept an annexation without the concept plan.
Um, I can, I can, we could certainly ask, uh, Mr. May, but, um, it's in the municipal code that says an annexation concept plan must be approved with the annexation. And those are clipped as attachments to the annexation agreement as well as to the ordinance. And I don't know if Eugene, Eugene has some comment?
That is my question is whether we can accept an annexation without accepting the concept plan.
Uh, give me a moment. If you got another question, uh, I can.
Yes, I have, I have, I have a few questions. Um, and so, uh, this would probably, I guess, also be for maybe natural resources. When we, we've heard comments about this as well as, uh, in the presentation. That there are no species, uh, of animals that were, would be affected adjacent, like I understand not on the actual site, but adjacent to it in the riparian area. So in that, uh, assessment, it's saying that the bank swallow and the leopard frog are, are not species of concern adjacent to the site. Is, is that correct?
Uh, I believe David Bell is here, but that is correct. There are no bank swallows on this particular property. They're on the Rogers Grove property. Um, I believe David and, uh, Dan Wolford are both here from Natural Resources.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim and David Bell, Director Parks Natural Resources. Um, as Ava's mentioned, the the bank swallows are adjacent to this property and the work that'd be done on this property would not have a direct impact on those nesting birds in that area. There really would be the R S V P project as we come through there, as we try to figure out um, long-term plans without how we would work, um, through that. But on this document and this plan, there were no swallows on that area and the, the work that was done by their consultants and looked at by Natural Resources staff. Um, we concur that there was no impact from this project to those, the swallows.
As, as for the leopard frog?
The leopard frog, I believe Dan Wolford's on right now because his staff is the one, uh, that really reviews those documents that are coming through from the consultants. I have not looked at, but Dan, would you mind taking that?
Mayor Pro Tim, council members, I'm unaware of leopard frogs being anywhere in, in this particular area. Uh, again, as David mentioned, we do have the, um, bank swallows, um, a- as well as making certain that our engineering staff who's working with uh, our S V P is aware of those situations. They're incorporating that information into the design. There's a lot of unknown yet because we are going through that phase three development of our, our S P. Um, a- again, as we move through the actual development of this site. It's would be, uh, planning and development's responsibility to make certain that they did that, an appropriate habitat, um, inventory and share that with, um, the Natural Resources staff. And at that point in time, we could incorporate that evaluation into those specific design details. But at this point in time, I was unaware that we have any, uh, leopard frog, um, uh, presence adjacent to this development.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, so I understand it that we have an hundred and fifty foot setback from our riparian, uh, the St. Rain as, as it is, uh, directly west of this proposed site is a, a body of water at the Rogers Grove. I don't know what you would call a lake or, or whatever. What have you? Uh, correct me.
Fairgrounds Lake, yeah.
Fairgrounds Lake. Uh, and so we don't have a similar hundred and fifty foot setback from that lake. Is that correct?
Mayor Pro Tim, that's correct.
So you, you can butt up pretty close to it, if, if I'm not incorrect there. And so just to clarify, that's just a clarification.
Um, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, sorry. Um, you know, upon a development application, we would ask them to take a closer look at Fairgrounds Lake and determine, it's up to the, you know, the applicant's biologist to verify whether that is or isn't a riparian area. And if it is, the hundred and fifty foot also applies on the west side.
Sure. And my understanding is that would be Laturian, not Riparian anyway. So, uh, slightly different. Anyway. Um, just, just clarifying things, uh, and it seems that, uh, Attorney May has an answer on something, so I'd like to hear that.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim, uh, fifteen oh two oh six oh eight three requires a concept plan with an annexation.
So it, it's not possible to sever that.
No.
Per code, per code. Thank you. Thank you. That was a question, uh, not a motion. So I will continue. So continuing saying that I have no problem with the M U zoning. I've already stated some issues, uh, with high density residential. Uh, I was a big proponent of transitionary zoning, uh, when we did that earlier in the land code uh, updates, uh, when it came to the change from single family to higher density. Um, and so I would say that the closest residential to the site are single family detached homes. And, and while they're across the river to the north, uh, in concept, the transition would be somewhat stark. So that's, that's just more of a statement. Uh, but I would say that in the interest of everything, I continue to promise to work towards finding the right fit. Because this will continue to come back before city council and if I'm no longer on city council, so be it. Uh, and no offense to Mr. De Simone. Uh, I understand that you are within the state, but each municipality has its own unique traits and characteristics, as well as the fact that, uh, we were all at least as far as city council is concerned, uh, elected by our constituents, not those in, say, Orvada or Golden. And I appreciate everything, uh, your work and everything you do. So again, it's no offense to you, Mr. De Simone. Uh, and so when it comes to the missing middle, uh, in, in Longmont, as, has been stated by some other folks, we have built a lot of multiplex and, and to a certain concept, live work spaces. And so I, I do want to continue to push the idea, uh, of, of missing middle that is slightly less density. And so I'm going to say something and maybe make some motions that are probably going to be not, um, in either side's best interest. And I think usually that's a better idea than giving one side or the other everything they want. Uh, so one thing I would say is that I would approve the annexation and concept plan with the condition, and this is a motion, with the condition that there will be no, um, ingress egress access road easement on open space. Uh, be it Boulder County or City of Longmont's open space. That'd be one condition and that's my first motion. I have a second motion.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Um, do we have any, uh, community, any discussion from council? This is the time to discuss that. Counselor Martin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Peck. Um, I don't think we saw this on a map or if we did, I didn't recognize it. Um, where uh, I mean, the, you know, the ingresses that I thought I saw on the concept plan were off Sunset and, um, through the commercial area. Um, so, so where, uh, is this hypothetical ingress over the open space supposed to be?
Hypothetically, if it were to happen, it would be on the west side of the property. Which would be, I believe, west of the duplex is proposed. Uh, it's just a condition. It's not even proposed, but just to make sure, to ensure that certain fears are allayed.
Okay. Well, it's already seconded, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, uh, I would like to weigh in on that. And I think where I am interpreting this motion is that the off of Boston Avenue, the two proposed egresses have to go through private property. And it, it's not, it's not clear as to whether that, uh, owner is going to allow those uh, this development to go through that private property. And if that is the case, then then we need, the developer is going to have to find another way to have an egress. So the way I'm interpreting the motion is that don't even think about going through open space for that, uh, egress. Um, i- i- if in fact you have to look for another way to get onto this property. Are there any other?
That, that is, I, I, I just sort of commented as far as the one, I, as I made the motion, that is the, the spirit of the motion is that we're not going to allow open space to be used for easements for ingress egress on the property. Because that's not what the spirit of open space is for our taxpayers.
Nor is it what the open space ordinance states. Um, Counselor Hidangal Farring.
You know, I do have a question. Maybe this is for Ava or Glenn. Um, what is the status? How I, uh, with the, working with the property owner just south? As far as their willingness to, to allow for, um, for, um, access roads to be developed there.
Uh, sure, I can take that one. Uh, Mayor and Councilmember Farring, um, to answer that question, um, again, those are platted easements. Uh, so they're legally allowed. Um, but then again, if they were developments, you know, that'd be a different story. We added into the annexation agreement a clause that says uh, any access is proposed off of Boston from those properties need to have written permission from those property owners. Uh, one access point is at the gas station where, where it's at the corner of Boston and Sunset. And the other is further west, uh, you know, in one of the, uh, industrial buildings down there on the west side. They don't necessarily need two access points if their traffic study, again, upon development, uh, they'd have to get a new traffic study. Uh, with more details, but they may not possibly need both axes. They might just, just need one off of Boston. In which case they would only need one property owner's permission. Um, I hope that answers your question. If neither one, so there's a requirement in the annexation agreement that says either property owner needs to give written permission before any development could be approved. If neither property owner gives permission, um, then they'd have to look at only having one access off of Sunset Street. And they would have to, uh, fine tune a traffic study to see if that's even feasible. And what traffic mitigation might be required on Sunset Street to accommodate all of the traffic.
So the concept plan very well or most likely would change based on, um, you know, the, um, written agreement with the property south and the change in the access point. And I'm just trying to make sense and understand this. Is that true?
So yes, if the property owners to the south don't for some reason give, uh, agreements uh, to access, um, then that would be a, a minor change, uh, which is the arrows that you saw. Um, the, the municipal code says there can be minor differences in a development plan from a concept plan, as long as it's generally consistent, is the language in our municipal code.
Okay. And then, um, one more question, um, and I don't know if this is the, the time, or are we going to have an additional discussion? Um, as we move forward, but I had seen and I might have been when I was watching the, um, planning and zoning meeting. But I did see a number of like, of two hundred something units and then to see the I can't remember where I saw it because I, I was looking at so many notes. I can't remember where exactly I saw that and why did it change? Um, or is the developer looking to, to max that, hit that three hundred and where did I put it at? Twenty-two, I believe, number of units?
So I can turn that over to Tony, but I can tell you in terms of the background, uh, there was a little inconsistency because we had the concept plan that was turned in. I think it showed like, it wrote down two hundred and seventy-nine units, but then there was an accompanying traffic study. And it had like three hundred and thirty units. And so the planning commission said, well, what, you know, how much, how much is it really? Is it the three thirty or the the two hundred? And so, uh, the applicant says it's probably going to be the one that's consistent with the traffic study. And so the, the concept plan you have that would go in the agreement, uh, is the correct one. It has three hundred and thirty units. But I will turn it to Tony to answer about why things may have changed.
Um, yeah, no, I, I don't think it has changed from, from where we were before. I think there was just a discrepancy in um, in the traffic study versus the graphic, but we're, we're in that three thirty-ish range. Um, but that's always to deliver that variety of housing, uh, and be able to do that affordably.
Would that change if there was only one access point? So
I, I honestly don't believe this is an issue. We do have an easement to access that area. I, I honestly don't believe this is an issue. We do have an easement to access that area and, and um. Um, just to uh, I uh confirm, there, there's no concern of us have any inclination, we want to go through open space, so. That is not an intention whatsoever. Um, so we're, we're planning on, uh, you know. Following in the, the path that we've laid out um tonight, so that's really our, our main objective.
Okay, and you know, back when the floods happened, I lived on Bowen Street, you know, between um second. Uh, near second and, and third. Um, and so we were really close to that, that area and just seeing the devastation. Um, you know, that is still in a flood zone. What is the um? What has FEMA or um? Any kinds of study looking at, at flood mitigation? You know, I, I don't want to be responsible for creating, you know, approving such a concept plan or such a plan and then. A development and then have it um be flooded and.
No, that's a good point. You know, the site is not developable as it is, as it stands today. Uh, we would not be able to build housing in that area. There is a significant exercise that, that has to happen to, to fill and bring that site out of the flood plain. Um, but as Ava mentioned, there's a clomer and then a lomer process, and it's, and it's fairly lengthy, so it will take years to get through. Um, so as Ava mentioned, this is not an imminent thing, so uh we're planning for the long term, but. There is a significant cost to raising the site out of the flood plain to make it buildable, so uh it's a, it's a fairly expensive site to develop.
So really, this is just the first step in the process. Um, in order to move forward with any kind of flood mitigation in that area, kind of this step needs to, to happen, is that?
Can, I mean, there's, there's, there's different routes you can go. One is to, again, take this through the city of Longmont and. The development process that way, the other would be through Boulder County. You know, our, our intention is really to take this through because we believe it's um, it's been indicated uh in the comp plan to be annexed in, so. That is our main objective. You know, that's step one. Step two is then to work through the site development process, and that'll be. With staff and then we'll go through, you know, uh, another couple, another round of, of this with planning commission and. City council, and then once the site plan has been uh approved. Um, that's when we can really, you know, uh finalize all the grading, apply to FEMA and start the clomer process, so. Uh, you know, again, this is, this is years in, uh, in the, into the future to get through it all.
So I'm going to interrupt here in that we have a motion on the table and your comments need to be to this motion. Um, and if they are, so thank you for uh. For the next comments, they need to be for the, for this motion. Uh, Councilwoman Martin.
I think it's uh about the motion because the motion is about um, an amendment to the concept plan.
No, this is uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna correct you. The motion is specifically about. Uh, not using open space for an access road. It's, it's just one simple motion.
Okay, so then I will wait to speak until we are back on the main motion.
Okay.
This isn't the only vote we get to take.
No, it is not. It is not. Uh, Councilor Waters, did you have a question or you went away? Okay, we have a motion on the. You're right, okay. We have a motion on the table uh that Mayor Pro Tim made about. Um, do you want to restate that, uh, Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, it was a motion to condition uh the annexation and concept plan. Uh, that no access easement be on any open space, be it. Boulder County or City of Longmont's owned open space. And that is, that's the motion.
Okay, and I seconded that. Uh, let's vote. All those in favor of this motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed, that carries unanimously. So, uh, Councilwoman Martin, I guess you're up.
Well, whoops, sorry.
Oh, oh, I'm, you're right. I had forgotten Mayor Pro Tim.
I, I had, I had one separate motion, and then I will give up the floor. I, I was hoping to keep the floor just for a second motion.
Yes.
I'll explain it very quickly that because of the riparian area to the north and the Litturian area or the Fairgrounds Lake. Uh, to the west, that a condition of the annexation and concept plan. Would be a multi-layered with natural vegetation buffering. On those specific, the west and north side portions of the site, and that, that is that motion.
Do, uh, I have a second on that? If not, I'll second that. Um, do we have discussion? Councilor Martin.
Yeah, I would like to clarify, um, uh, Mr. De Simone made some statements about land dedication. For the purpose of flood mitigation and uh the wildlife corridor and um. Talked about compatibility of the, of the landscaping, so. Oh, I would like to question whether the, is the intent of that? That uh, the, in, in particular, the hundred and fifty foot, foot setback, but also any land dedicated to make the split flow. Uh, future mitigation work. Does, does that include um restoring those areas to natural landscaping as opposed to the current blighted? Non-scaping, whatever is there. Um, just, you know, is that, is that the intent?
The intent is partially that and also to ensure um. Adequate buffering on the west side of the property, which does not qualify for the hundred and fifty foot setback. Uh, that is our riparian setback. Uh, but it also seems to me to be a very inappropriate. Place to add buffering as it is complete, is directly adjacent to open space as well as a. Lake body of water versus a river body of water. And so that, that, that is the intent.
Right, and I was actually questioning Mr. De Simone's intent. Does he get to talk or not?
Yeah, I, I guess so, Mr. De Simone. Let, let's have a fast statement on that.
Sure, yeah, no, that's our intent is, is uh, you know, to kind of re-vegetate that, to make it natural and create that buffer. Um, on the west side, we are looking to try to downzone on that area. Um, there is a pretty active walking path adjacent as well. Built into Rogers Grove, so. Uh, we just want to be respectful to that, and, and we'll do a good job to um be able to blend into that setting.
Um, yeah, my, my concern with this motion is, is the uh. The specifics of the term multi-tier as opposed to something less uh, well. Something less prescriptive and less subject to interpretation because I don't know what three-tiered means. Uh, necessarily, but I, I have a much better comfort level with compatible. Um, you know, we, we, you know, we have examples. We can go look at. Dickens Farm Park Restoration, for example. Um, so uh, Mayor Pro Tim, can you clarify?
I, I, I can, I can clarify. I will change uh i- if folks are, are amenable. I will clarify and alter my motion to say that it will be consistent buffering. Uh, as with the riparian area. The western side of the property will have consistent buffering as the northern side of the property with natural vegetation. Does that sound? More amenable than?
Yeah, I feel a lot better about that.
Okay, consistent buffering.
So uh, I seconded that because I have a different vision, um, and we don't know what this concept plan is gonna look like. Um, the, the path uh around that lake, the open area that is open to residents and people. Uh, my, my reasoning is we don't know what the concept plan with that uh residential area. Is it gonna be people's backyards, people's patios? I would just assume. That for, for me and for using that pathway like it is today. That we're not looking into people's backyards and homes and vice versa. That's why I would like the, the tiered buffering. So that we uh, we make it compatible with, with what's there already as far as um. An environmental bike path. That, that's why I seconded it. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you. I, I just, I guess I would say that it's very prescriptive in the riparian area. Uh, in a lot of concepts, and that's why if we make it consistent on the west side, the Litturian area, if you will. I- if they're consistent. It automatically kind of brings that prescriptiveness to the west side of the property. I- at least that's what I am um. Interpreting when I, when I say that.
All right, um, is there any comments by any other counselors on this? Uh, Councilor Waters.
Uh, just to clarify, was the motion, did you change the motion to consistent? In.
Yes, he did.
And did you change, did the second, did the second change to support that motion?
Uh, this, the second change, what do you mean by that? I'm sorry.
Did you second his, the change in his motion? Cause I thought you were not seconding. I just, just want to clarify.
Yes, I will. I will second the change in his motion. Thank you. Um, so we do have that motion on the table. Let's vote. All those in favor of the consistent buffering on the west side. Please raise your hand. Thank you. All those opposed, that passes unanimously. Um, so are there any other, is there any more discussion about this, uh, Councilor Waters?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Peck. And I'm gonna, I, I'll apologize going into this, that I, I don't want to surprise it. This may be a surprise to David Bell or, or Glenn or others. Um, and I should have thought to ask this earlier. Uh, when we looked at the suc- the Sustainability Evaluation System. And David brought back with uh a team, the red, green, the red, yellow, green areas to which the SES would apply. Um, uh, without going back and looking at that presentation, I'm assuming. That this area would, would have been in the green, would have been a green space. David Bell, is that fair? And I think, if you're the right one to ask?
Um, yes, uh, Councilor Member Waters, um, I'll have my planning group right behind me to back me up on this, but. The St. Brain Creek was one of those, those green areas. The Fairgrounds Lake, though, as I looked that direction, that's where I won. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim asked that question, I think that would be one of those other, other areas where we did not look at, but the St. Brain Creek was one of those, those areas.
I just think it's important to point out, well, I just, let me assume Glenn. Um, you're still in, on this call. Uh, the, describe the process that's gonna unfold. This is a green area, which means the Sustainability Evaluation System. As it's applied to private sector development, would be applied in this particular case. Um, which protects the riparian area. Uh, it, it also expects. A certain kind of benefits to the community, social, uh, socioeconomic. Uh, economic development, social equity, you know, benefits to the community. Um, I would assume this is one of those, this would be a proposed project at some point to which the SES would be applied. And, and, and I see uh Dan came back, back on the screen. I don't know whether it's Glenn or David or.
It's Ava. I've got an answer.
Or Ava, okay, thank you, Ava. How we would apply the SES. By the way, it was this, it was the river, the first presentation. On the other side of Sunset, as I recall, of this particular project. That was the basis for the motion to apply the SES to private sector development. That's what moved this forward. Um, so it's interesting now, this comes back to see how this gets applied.
So if I could just clarify, uh, Councilmember Waters, the SES is only applicable. When a developer cannot meet the hundred and fifty foot riparian setback standard and they're asking for a variance. That's when we go through the whole SES process.
Oh gee, that sounded quite how I understood it, but I'll, I'll accept your statement. Uh, the, the SES had, uh, we, we, we went through that discussions about nexus between. Area in, in the three legs of the, of the SES, social equity. Uh, uh, broader economic prosperity and obviously. Uh, the economic impact uh for the, both the developer and for the larger community. Uh, it will. Uh, I'm gonna assume. That it's gonna apply to this project to, i- in this way at the very least. That there won't be any encroachment, and we've already heard this in the hundred and fifty foot setbacks, along with the motions that the mayor pro temps already offered. Is that fair? Ava?
Sorry, uh. You're, yours, you're asked, I'm sorry, Councilmember Waters, just wanted to confirm what you just asked. You're asking. If this project meets the hundred and fifty foot riparian setback.
It will have satisfied the, the criterion we've created in the SES.
So I, it's, I'll, I could toss it back to David, but it's my understanding, we do the analysis of the SES. When someone says, I can't meet your standard, and that's when we look at all of the factors. Is that correct, David?
Yes, that's what I understand. I just went through that exercise. If the developer came to us and said. Um, we're up against these areas in the green that's got, you know, the SES tool applied to it, and we cannot meet that setback. Then we would, to help make that decision, if we would grant that variance, we would run that tool to see if those trade-offs uh made sense. For the, the community. And in this development, Ava, this is where I'm, I'm having hard to answer. In this development, we are not hearing there's anything that's being asked for a variance.
So those won't be issues. Thanks. Can I ask one more question, Mayor Peck of?
Yes.
Uh, of both uh Tony and David Starnes. Um, you know, we've come, we, you, you've heard a lot of these concerns, all of them, I, I'm, I share. Um, but I'll, I also would like to give you a chance to talk about what do you need? From, from, whether it's this city council or any city council, this is a, this is a redevelopment, this is brownfield development. There's a certain amount of risk. And expense that goes along with developing this. To turn it from a, develop it from a blighted area into something that is usable and attractive and compatible. What do you need from people like us to make this work? In ways that reduce the, to the degree we can, reduce the cost of the product, whatever that product's gonna be. Reduce the cost of the product and achieve all the compatibility and, and environmental standards that we've talked about.
I don't know if David wants to take the first swing at it, but I, I can certainly jump in as well. Um. Thank you for the question, Councilman Waters. Uh, you know, this, as I mentioned, the sites are a very costly site to develop. Uh, the change that was just proposed of uh implementing another hundred and fifty foot setback from the property line is detrimental to the project. I mean, the fact that we're shrinking the site so densely. Um, it's gonna force higher density housing that we're proposing, um, and what we proposed. Was to have more walkable streets. And by bringing the site in from the outside, actually is gonna make it denser and, and less walkable, so I think we need to be careful on. Uh, changes, you know, I feel like we're just throwing changes out at this thing. Um, you, the, the reason the unit count is what it is, is because there, there needs to be a hundred thousand yards. Of fill brought in to bring this site out of the flood plain. Um, that's usually expensive, um, and so. You need that unit count um to justify the cost to be able to develop it, and so. Um, you know, to do the commercial is, is challenging as well because the commercial doesn't make money. The, the residential's would subsidize its commercial in having the, the amount of units that we're proposing. Is what allows us to create that employment zone. Um, so there are some mechanisms, you know, as a bided site and, and uh, you know. Potentially, maybe there's TIF there or something like that, but. Um, you know, this site needs a lot to be developable, so um. I'm a little disappointed in the direction we're going. I, I just, you know, what we're proposing tonight. Uh, is being cut up, so I just don't know if uh what we propose is now developable based on the changes.
Excuse me, I'm going to interrupt, make a motion that we extend the meeting past eleven o'clock. Second, uh, all those in favor, raise your hand. Except for Councilor Waters. Oh, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, I was a no vote.
Oh, you were a no vote. One opposed, so that does not pass unanimously. It passes uh five to uh. Five to one with Councilor Waters opposing. Um, David Starnes has his ha- uh, hand raised. Um, uh, but Councilor Martin was first, so hang in there, David. Councilor Martin.
Yeah, just quickly, uh, I didn't understand uh. What Tony meant by a second hundred and fifty foot setback.
I don't, I don't either, actually.
Yeah, so can we clarify that? Cause I don't think anybody said that.
Okay, could, it, will we be able to pull up the site plan, Ava? Uh, because maybe I could talk through it that way, and maybe I'm misinterpreting this, I apologize. Okay, will we be able to pull up the site plan, Ava? Uh, because maybe I could talk through it that way. And maybe I'm misinterpreting this, I apologize, but um, it, it just put me in a tailspin, so, um, I don't know if we can pull up the site plan and maybe we can talk from there.
Yes, I can. Do you know which slide that was?
Uh, ooh, um, it's, it's kind of towards the beginning of that presentation. There's a, um, a concept plan on there.
Okay, give me just a moment. I'll pull it up and you can tell me which one it is.
Okay. See, uh, let's go down. One more. One more. Right there. Okay, so in the upper left-hand corner, that is the site plan. And what you'll see in that site plan, there's a property boundary, uh, in, in that black kind of dotted line. That area between that property line and where you start seeing those colored shapes, that's 150-foot, 150-foot, uh, riparian setback. So that's an area that we're not planning any development. Um, we talked about revegetation. I, what I thought was proposed was that 150-foot setback then go all the way around to the west. And we're, we're proposing that, um, you know, that missing middle product, that, that, uh, lower density townhome or, um, parrot home product. Uh, that would eat up that whole part of the site if we had a setback from that edge of the site, so um, there are regular setbacks that are in the code that allow for this, so um, it, that's what I interpret as what was proposed, was, was, uh, making that undevelopable.
Can I, uh, uh, Counselor Martin, go ahead.
Yeah, just to, to sort of finish out the question. Um, first of all, we don't have a, a lakeside setback in our code. Um, and second, if we did, it would be from the edge of the water, not from the edge of the parcel. Correct? Or, you know, I mean hypothetically, I think we would. Um, so, um, what we're, maybe, maybe Mayor Pro Tim can clarify what he, what he wants to do in the townhome area. And honestly, in the com, in the concept plan, um, we're talking about the townhomes or the duplexes, I think, are in that blue lozenge, the vertical one, correct? Mr. De Simone?
Yes, that's correct. That's skinnier rectangular, uh, darker blue is where
Yeah, so is that where the house is in? Do they have backyards? Do they have?
We, we don't know any of that.
Yeah, I know. And that's, that's what I'm saying. Why, why are we, you know, we don't have the, we don't have the, the picture's too small to know the scale, so it's really hard to tell how much is being eaten. I don't think we have enough information there.
Uh, may I jump in here? Uh, Mr. De Simone, um, we never mentioned 150-foot setback on the west side. It was, uh, it was a layered buffer that is consistent with what would be on the, uh, south side. Uh, yes, the north side.
Okay, um, I think the challenge for us on our side is, we don't know what that means, so
Nor do we. We just know that we want it to be buffered.
You know, we intentionally did, uh, lower the density as it approached Rogers Grove for that reason. Those, those units would have backyards, would have fences, would have privacy. Um, but I just want to make sure we have the flexibility to do what, what is appropriate. And I, I, I just don't, the language is very, very loose, so um, I would just ask for some help there.
Um, I don't know. Uh, uh, I'm going to call on David Starnes. Now perhaps he has some insight into this.
Um, Mayor Peck, Councilmember, yeah, my, my question's being answered. My question that was, um, does that mean 150 feet? It was unclear to me. So, and what the tiered buffering system means um, in relation to, you know, as we mentioned for the north side, I just didn't know how that applies to the west side. So I think it's been partially answered, because you're referring to not applying the 150 to the west side, but what it means to be determined. And maybe that's part of the site plan application, is we could work through that downline there.
Exactly. Thank you. So, um, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez?
Yes, it's, it was based on my motion, and so I just want to make a clarification on, on kind of the intent as far as I see it. Uh, you know, the way that map looks, which is obviously just some, some blocks overlaid. So there's no true detailed site plan there. Uh, but what I would say is what I'm not looking to see is a fence directly next to the current walking path. For instance, uh, there would be a consistent buffer, as I would hope to see on the north side, uh, that is not dealing with the 150-foot setback, but just some sort of natural buffering between actual development as, and the adjacent property, just as, as you see in, in many different places. Uh, not 150-foot setback necessarily um, from the edge of the water, because that seems like that would be onerous in comparison, uh, if you will. That was the intent of the motion, that you're not sticking that fence right next to the walking path. Uh, you're, or whatever it happens to be, maybe, uh, you know, a porch or who knows, uh, as there's not that much detail there. That was the intent of the motion, not 150-foot setback.
So, uh, I am going, I know Counselor, uh, Martin, you would like to continue this conversation, but let's move on um, to other areas. Does anyone have a motion or a comment that is not about this buffered or 100 supposed 100-foot setback? Uh, Counselor Yarborough?
Um, thank you, um, Mayor Peck. I just want to say, I am learning so much. Um, Tony, this is my, I'm new to council, so I've been really quiet, some learning and observing the experts, my, uh, fellow council members and mayor. Um, I just want to say thank you all for, um, having good discussion and I agree with the, um, the, the buffer and everything else that I've read and learned. It was a lot of information. Um, but I do appreciate you, Tony, being patient and understanding what we're trying to uh, portray to you and explain, because just like if you built your home, you want to make sure your home is, is, you know, livable for your family. And, and so Longmont is our home. And so our constituents also want to make sure that we make the best decisions for, and we can't please everyone. So I just want to say thank you, Ava, as well. And, um, and I, um, I don't really have much more. I just agree with my fellow council members, and I just wanted to say thank you for your patience.
Say, Counselor Waters?
Yeah, I was hoping that, just from my, for earlier question, we could get a response from David Starnes, if he has one, uh, about, you know, what, we certainly create expectations and we should for these developers, for all developers. But I'd also like to hear from them, uh, what we could do that would help deliver the kind of housing or other product that we've said that we would like the development community to, to propose to us. So what do they need from us? David, do you have a response? I appreciate Tony's.
Um, uh, Mayor Peck, um, Councilmember Waters, I think, um, just from a development perspective, I think one of the things that's really important um, for us, I mean, is transparency and predictability um, in the process. Um, as you know, you know, the longer things take to get approved, well, you know, we recognize going through entitlement process is lengthy. Um, but to the extent that the process can be transparent and predictable, so that we know when we respond back to comments from city planning staff, it's really helpful, um, for us to, one, shorten the number of reviews and, you know, hopefully deliver a product that meets the community expectations in terms of housing and commercial development. So that's probably the, the main thing, I think, is, is just knowing what the rules are and then kind of follow, you know, being predictable and transparent throughout the process and having good communication with planning staff, which, which we do. I think we're really appreciative of Ava and, um, Glenn and the rest of the staff have been really helpful to kind of help us walk through this is again, this is the first step. I mean, the next big step, assuming we're successful, is going through this site plan application, which is the big one. So I guess I would just, you know, reiterate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for allowing me to get, get that answer.
Okay, uh, Counselor Martin, you have spoken several times on this issue, so I'm going to, uh, speak first.
Um, yeah, I just, uh, I've spoken on the, um, sub-motions, but I don't think I've spoken on the main motion.
Okay. Go ahead.
You can speak first. I just want to be sure that I can speak.
Yes, you can. I will not forget you. So, um, I do have a question and I am a little, uh, um, I have, I'm a little concerned or frustrated in that we can't divide this motion, because I would definitely vote for the annexation, but I have a problem with the concept plan. So I think that is some of the reason we're having these motions is, is, uh, because of, of that. So my, uh, my concern is in the concept plan, bullet number 14. And before I make this or ask the question, uh, can you clarify um, the dedicated land to the city along the St. Brain? Does that have to do with the RSVP? Or is this actually part of the development? Uh, Ava, can you answer that?
Uh, Mayor Peck, that's, that's correct. That's, uh, land dedication for RSVP.
Okay, uh, in bullet 14 on your concept plan, it says that this land along the St. Brain uh, dedicated to the city is going to be dedicated at the time of development. Um, I am going to move that we change that to the, uh, that we, uh, that you dedicate that at the time of the acceptance of the concept plan. And the reason that I'm saying that is that, uh, RSVP could come way before the development of this property. And, uh, we need that dedicated land in order to complete RSVP. So, um, is, is that, does that make sense, Ava?
Uh, Mayor Peck, I just wanted to say, uh, actually that is in the language of the annexation agreement, which you have before you, which would be recorded with the property. So in our opinion, it's not necessary at this point to make that motion. And the reason why is because, as you know, this is unfunded. And so Public Works, and I've got Chris Huffer here and Jim Angstad from Public Works who can elaborate, but they haven't determined those exact boundaries of land dedication yet. And so, um, it's in the annexation agreement that says when Public Works figures that out, the applicant will have to dedicate that land. So that's already agreed to and signed by all parties in the annexation agreement that that'll be done.
Then why is it in the, uh, concept plan if it's in the annexation agreement?
Right. So I think you're talking about two different things. So the thing that's in the concept plan is Greenway dedication. Um, which would be separate from the resilient St. Rain channel widening.
Oh, that's, that was my question to begin with. The, in, in this concept plan, does this refer to RSVP or, or the Greenway? Um, so in the concept plan, it refers to the Greenway. And you're going to dedicate that at development, not at, um, the acceptance of the concept plan?
That's correct. And that's because, um, again, this is an annexation, so we haven't begun a planning process that comes next when it's in our jurisdiction. At the planning process, when we plant the property, that is when you dedicate the Greenway.
Okay, I will, uh, not make that motion. And thank you for that explanation, Ava. Counselor Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Um, since we seem to have a lot of issues with the concept plan, um, I personally don't actually, um, but, um, my, my question is, you know, this is a long development, a bunch of, uh, you know, the, um, Army Corps of Engineers work and so on has to happen before this land becomes developable. Um, the housing market could change, will change in that amount of time. So for example, um, right now, the concept plan says a lot of this is, is presumed to be rental. Would it have to be rental because it was in the concept plan, or could a similarly dense, uh, but differently organized or differently marketed, um, building, uh, could, would a, a project be acceptable that was like that, that wasn't precisely what the concept plan had? Or no, does it have to be rental if it says rental now?
Right, Mayor Peck and, and Councilmember Martin, uh, I don't believe the concept plan specifically says rental. What we do call it is apartments. Uh, we call it multifamily in terms of land use, but we don't dictate at the annexation juncture whether something very specifically would be a rental, uh, or, or for ownership. So that's more, um, sort of those details are fine tuned at site plan review.
Okay, excellent. So that means that, uh, while we're, we're generally describing the density and the idea that it's less dense over by Rogers Grove than it is over by the industrial area, that, um, you know, basically this is a, a middle-ish dense, uh, uh, multifamily area, which is what's going to be built from here on out, frankly. Uh, but, but we're not dictating the marketing details at this point. Then, so Ava, you're nodding, I said
Sorry, I, I thought my mic was off. Uh, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. Then I'm, then I am comfortable is, is, uh, uh, is it appropriate now? I've lost track, a little bit of track of how deep in sub-motions we are. Is it appropriate to move the annexation now as amended? Yes, then I so move.
Do we have a second? Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez?
Thank you. I just want to chime in, uh, very quickly that, yes, uh, that is specifically why I made the motions that I did, the, the sub-motions, if you will, is to provide as much protection around our riparian area and open space areas as possible, knowing that it's going to be a process before we get to the, the real uh, nitty gritty, uh, details of the development. Um, and so as long as I felt that we had the, the proper protections for the riparian and open space areas, that we can now let it go through the process. And so that's why I, I do second.
Uh, is there any more discussion? Yeah, I don't see anything, but I will make my statement in that, uh, again, I will vote for this, but I am disappointed that we couldn't divide this per Robert's Rules of Order to have two separate motions on this project. Um, and I do want to, uh, to add the statement that in our last discussion on this at the last meeting, the annexation, that three of us at least really wanted townhomes, condominiums and for sale properties, so that it wasn't all rental. So when we do the site development plan, I, uh, I would like us to remember that. So, um, all those in favor of this motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, uh, Anthony, Tony.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we have one more reading on the second, uh, hearing, and it is be public hearing to consider action on amendment number 20-04 to the 2020 CDBG Action Plan. Uh, I would like to invite Molly O'Donnell or Kathy Fedler. There is no presentation here, but if you would have some remarks on this that you would like to make?
Thank you, Mayor Peck and members of council. I will be speaking on this today instead of Kathy Fedler. Um, so this is just briefly a proposed amendment to change the eligible activity and the number of beneficiaries under our Community Development Lot Grant COVID Relief Funding from the COVID Recovery Center Project to house, um, temporarily house unhoused individuals that need to isolate um, and change that funding $70,000 to implement, to help implement the Fresh Start Utility Billing Assistance Program. Um, so we need a public hearing in order to make that type of change. And this will help actually serve more Longmont residents. Um, and the reason that the COVID Recovery Center Fund- And the reason that the COVID Recovery Center funding is no longer needed is because they ended up getting funded by FEMA. So we're moving that into the next highest need.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Do I have any questions from counselors? Counsel, Counselor Waters?
Thanks, Mayor Peck. Molly, real quickly, on, back to my notes, on page two of the, not the council communication, the, the document, the attached document, there's a table that shows the seventy thousand dollars being added to this. But I, but, but there's a, but there's a total of a hundred and fifty thousand. It looks like seventy added to seventy. And then there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I couldn't make sense of that table with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Was that a typo or is it, did I miss something in the table?
Nope, that's the typo. We can go ahead and make sure that we get that fixed before this gets recorded.
So it would be a hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and fifty?
Well, it's, it's still seventy total. So seventy is being moved from COVID Recovery Center into Fresh Start Utility Billing Assistance.
All right, so the, so it's a big typo.
It is.
All right, second, I, I should have called and asked. I apologize. I should have checked this with you ahead of time. But there's a related question. And just so I'm clear, what we're doing with this is approving, basically, we're adding, we're, we're moving the seventy thousand dollars, which would allow us to provide support for forty six additional
Correct.
beneficiaries, right, of the, add that to the four hundred and forty. So it's now forty six of the fifteen hundred that are in arrears and are.
Right.
Yeah, all right, very good. Thanks.
Good catch, Counselor Waters. So is there anybody else from council that would have questions on this? Let's open it to public invited to be heard. Is there anybody on the phone that would like to speak on this item? Hit star nine and to raise your hand and Dallas will call on you.
There are no more callers in the chat, Mayor Peck.
No more callers. Great. I'll close the public hearing. I would like to ask for a motion. Does somebody want to move?
I'll move approval of, is that, is that, take that screen down. Is this a resolution? The amendment, yes, twenty twenty-four to the CBDG action plan.
Second, okay, was that Counselor Martin that seconded that? Okay, thank you. That was moved by Counselor Waters, seconded by Counselor Martin. All those in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed? That passes unanimously. So now we go to items removed from the consent agenda, and it was item B, removed by Counselor Martin. Counselor Martin, do you want to take that on?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Peck. I need to make a statement and then ask some questions. Mr. Van Nimwegen and Mr. Dr. Bell will need to address these questions. But I'm going to read the whole thing first, and then they have a list of the questions so that they can answer them.
Okay.
This is my statement. I need to disclose that I failed to recognize that the matter of the Zlatan parcel rezoning is a potential quasi judicial hearing. Because of that, when I received an email from a member of the Historic Preservation Committee on the subject, I responded to it. I did not commit to supporting his position, but asked some questions of him about parts of the packet that I did not understand or did not, I felt were not definitive enough. The email exchange is in the public record, but it needs to be part of the hearing on this matter. So I am now going to ask the substantially the same questions in this hearing so that the staff may answer them and all members of council and the public will have the same information. Here are the questions. One, do all the buildings from the former Dickens establishment have to be raised before the proposed new structure can be built? Two, what buildings are on the outlots that the developer is, is proposing or was considering to dedicate to the city? Three, are the buildings presently unsafe? And if all were preserved, how much would it cost to restore them to be fit for public use or inspection? Four, if one or more of the buildings were left standing on city property, what would be the city's liability if they could not be restored promptly? And five, is there or is there not any ongoing discussion about how the historic aspects of the property would be recognized? I do not feel that the dialogue I had with the resident has prejudiced me in this matter. I will not recuse myself voluntarily from voting on it. However, I remind council that any member may introduce a motion to recuse me instead. If anyone feels that I should withdraw, then this motion would be appropriate after Dr. Bell and Mr. Van Nimwegen have answered my five questions. Thank you.
Okay, well, maybe I'll, thank you, Mayor Peck and Councilmember Martin. I'll take a shot at it. And if I get stuck, David can help out. And if I could ask Dallas and or Dawn, we have an exhibit that shows the seven eleven site on the, with the existing conditions?
Sure thing. Give me just a moment with that.
Perfect. So your number one question is, do all the buildings on the former Dickens establishment have to be raised for the proposed development? And as you can see in the exhibit, they mark three and four, which is a shed and the residence and a garage would have to go away with the development. There are buildings, one is a large barn and two, I think, is a building that's basically collapsed. So to answer number one, buildings three and four are under the new facility and would have to go away. Question two, what buildings are on the outlot that the developer is proposing to dedicate to the city? The gray area called out as Outlot B is the area that is proposed to be dedicated to the city. There are no structures from the Dickens area within that. I do understand from David that I think there's an old boxcar somewhere on the site. But none of the, part of the homestead of the Dickens site is within the Outlot B. Are the buildings presently unsafe? And if all were preserved, how much would it cost to restore them to be fit for public use? So the applicant has provided a structural analysis of all the different buildings. And he identifies costs for number one, just to make the building safe and keep it from collapsing. But then ultimately, the cost would be if we're going to use all these buildings for a viable commercial use, what would that cost be? And he provided a range for all of the buildings within the Dickens homestead to be safe for commercial use would be somewhere in the range of three and a half to five million dollars. And again, each building is a little bit different as far as how those costs break out. But to answer your question, it's three and a half to five million dollars if we're going to preserve that site for, for a commercial use. Number four, if one or more of the buildings were left standing on the city property, I think we answer that. There are no buildings proposed in the area to be dedicated to the city. And then finally, is there or is there not an ongoing discussion about how the historical aspects of the property would be recognized? And how I would answer that is, as we propose in your ultimate motion, as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, is that with approval, that the applicant go back to the Historic Preservation Commission with a proposal for a plan for preservation of the site's history through incorporation of appropriate references, which would be included in the site. I don't read that, and I don't think the intent was that means preserving all the buildings. But basically, an appropriate telling of the story of what's at the, at this location. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
No, thank you. That, that answers my questions. And I move item nine B.
Second. All those in favor of the motion to move ordinance, not, well, what is that ordinance number? Hang on, I'll find it. Ordinance zero two zero two two oh two, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving this latent commercial center rezoning. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? That passes unanimously. We are now at the part of the agenda that is our general business. Under this general business, there's going to be a presentation about the American Recovery or ARPA update and funding proposal. Harold, are you ready to give us an update on that?
Mayor, I don't know if you're seeing a hand raised.
I'm not. Oh, Counselor Martin?
I was just going to make a suggestion, and I will defer to the city manager on this. But it's eleven thirty, and we've, earlier in the evening, we agreed to not have the public forum next week. And could we continue this meeting next Tuesday night?
These two items actually have to go because they're, this one is related to the Costco that I wanted to explain. What we can do is I'll move through this one with some pace on this one. And then Costco, Jim can do an abbreviated presentation, and then we can do a much more in-depth presentation. But time wise, because of the, the second meeting on the twenty-fifth, we really need this one to, these two items to go.
Okay, so can I inter, intercept this a little bit? We do have a final call, public invited to be heard. As we are having this presentation, I would like to pull anyone who wants to have a comment on this Costco. Can we do this simultaneously so we don't have to take a five minute break to onboard those people?
We have slides. So we can't share the screen at the same time.
Okay. All right. Just a suggestion. Go ahead, Harold.
All right, Dallas, can you pull my slide up? All right, next slide. So Mayor Council, this is just an update in terms of what the American Rescue Plan Act was. You all, we've gone over this before. You can go to the next slide, Dallas. In, in this case, ARPA allocated twelve point nine million to the city. And, and so we, so we put that in as the, the place marker that we had to deal with. We received the first half in June, and the second half is coming in June twenty twenty-two. Next slide, please. When we presented to council the first time, what we really talked about in, and you all saw in your council con that the amount of money that was requested was significantly higher than what we actually had available. And what we talked to council about was really doing transformational projects and that would really impact our community. And you all laid out some main, some primary categories, affordable housing, healthy childhood environments, whole neighborhoods, household and business and individual assistance and organizational capacity and data management. If you remember, go ahead and go to the next slide, Dallas. All right. As, as we're going through this, one of the things that we talked about was also utilizing existing funding that was going into other avenues via the ARPA fund. And I'll talk a little bit about that as we move through. Where you're primarily going to see that is in the category of household and business and individual assistance. What we know is that there's a lot of dollars actually out there via the county and state agencies in this realm. And so it would really be a duplication of the dollars going in. So what you're going to see on the second bullet point is that's really going to be tied in with our organizational and capacity and data management to really get the staff in the organization so that we could really get in and tap into those other county, state resources available for the individual and business assistance component. One of the things that also came into play is that there were two funding sources outside of ARPA that, that I used in this to balance it. One was the Affordable Housing Fund, and then the other was what we've allocated in the General Fund for Early Childhood Education. And that was really when we looked at the scope of the projects, what we needed to do was actually, we needed more money than we, we had when we were looking at this. And so this really let us get a more complete list of what we needed to do. And, and as I said, as we've said a couple of times, we're working to leverage those other funds to assist in this category. One of the things that we're going to talk about when I go through these individual categories is, is you all considering giving us permission to move within those, those, those respective categories. And we will obviously be coming back to council as we're doing it. We just know that certain things may not take as much money as we thought, or some things may take more, and we're going to need some flexibility there. Next slide. So in general, you can see that we're putting in seven hundred and fifty thousand, what we already have, general fund and three million for the affordable housing. Adding that to the twelve point nine to come up with sixteen point five million. You can see how that's broken out in these categories, obviously, with eleven point eight million going to affordable housing. Next slide. When we look at affordable housing, a lot of this is based on some projects that we're seeing and actually some similar issues that you're going to see in the Costco discussion pressing some current projects that we have. So Sunset Heights, which is really the Element project, and that's adjacent to the suite, which is fully supportive housing. What we've plugged in there is if you remember the suite, the Sunset Heights project actually competed for tax credits and nine percent competitive tax credits, and it wasn't awarded. We're going back in February. The one point three million is actually set in for this project where if we don't get the nine percent, we can actually come in and fund it in a way where it would act like the nine percent tax credit. So we can keep that project moving forward. Obviously, if we get it, then we can move that one point three million to some other projects. The Crispin Development Project, we've talked to you all about this, and you, you voted on it. This is the one I was talking about that's similar to the issues we're dealing in Costco. Because of labor, because of material costs and supply chain issues, all associated with the current world and projects, we're seeing increased cost on that, and this would allow us to develop that project. We've also talked about the need for affordable assisted living, really associated also with the work we're doing with the Housing Authority. And this is seed money based on what we've seen in terms of finding development partners, what we think we can bring to the table to engage in some conversations with people who are able to do this. One point three million is really, again, seed money and what we bring into these other partnerships that we've been building to develop the vacant Housing Authority property off of, we call it the Hoover Property, but it's just west of the Lodge at Hearthstone. You know, we talked about this before as putting, and you're going to see some changes at one point. I had three million in this. We're going to put one point five in. That's the cost of the land for Project Mustang. That's what's associated with the next item. We also know that in many of our affordable housing projects, you know, we've taken some bulk agreements. What we want to do is actually really work on the digital divide, both for properties for older adults and our family properties, seed the money. We know this is one time cost, but we can then build that into the rent structure so that we can provide internet. You can also see one point five million for an unhoused option. This is, we've been talking about a lot of issues related to our parks and, and, and our neighborhoods. And in order to really start to, to do what we've, we've been talking about with council, we also know that we need the money to really have an option for the unhoused in our community. Because without that option, it really limits in some cases what we can do. And we're going to bring an update on that later for council. And we can go in that more detail. You can see a couple of things, and this is one point five million for the Royal Mobile Home Purchase. But then we also had the Royal Mobile Home Purchase, but then we also had 1.5 million in for the the first main steam area. We're going to combine those two in order to take 3 million to purchase that property from our Stormwater Fund. So we can develop affordable housing. And then finally, we need to seed a position in here. And we're going to have to fund this ongoing over time. Even though we know this is one time, we're going to have to build into it is really a staff, a development and finance position for affordable housing so that we actually have the staff that can can do the work that we need to do. We just don't have the number of staff we need in this arena. We know we're also limited. We have to spend this money very fast. And so that's a need for the staff on this. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the housing.
We have any questions? I don't see any hands.
Can't see all of you, so we'll go to the next one.
It doesn't look like there are any questions.
All right. Early childhood, you can see. This one's a little bit different, this slide. So. Oh, this is two. So you can see that we have the 225,000 for data collection, 500,000 for early childhood health. We're really seeing this in terms of potentially some mental health services. And then a half a million for childcare in this case. And then in the whole neighborhood projects, 750,000 expanding programming support and community resi- programming support for the whole neighborhood. For a neighborhood services department, community resiliency and recovery at 750,000. And then 750,000 in neighborhood and enhancement. You're seeing the connection to the housing and also some of the issues that we're talking about because we know we also need to spend the money in our neighborhood so we can really create resilient and sustainable neighborhoods so that when we go through pandemics or any other kind of disaster in the future, the neighborhoods are stronger. This really is linked to some of the work we did after the flood where we went in and started doing cert training with different neighborhoods, because we know the stronger our neighborhoods are, the more resilient we're going to be as we move through through future scenarios. Are there any questions on this? Excellent. So that's all the slides I have on this. Obviously, we when we provided you all with more detail. What we wanted to see is if you were, if council supported the approach in the allocation that we talked about with the ARPA funds in this case, I know there were some comments earlier, many of those things we actually funded through the budget process. For example, the ombudsman position in our planning and development services that was actually funded in the ongoing budget as we, I call it an ombudsman, but it's, I think that's really what it has a different title. So those things are still on our on our radar in terms of what we're doing, obviously, working the processes to ensure that we can continue, that we can move with pace. And we're actually having conversations now about the need to really move with pace because we're limited in terms of what we can spend these funds.
Hey, Harold, I apologize. There are a couple more slides. I was closing it when you were asking a question, so I wanted to make sure that no one was asking.
Next slide. The organizational capacity project. So in this, this is really where we're seeing where we're tying things together based on on what we need. And again, we think we may have some. So we're looking at a neighborhood engagement portal. We're estimating that at 200,000. But there's also, when you see the next line, a customer relation management software. That's really what's going to start connecting all of these things together so we can operationalize it. We're going to look at whether or not the customer relation management system can do the work that we need for the also the neighborhood engagement portal, or we can combine the customer relation management with some of the software systems we have. So we've got some more work we need to do there. The also on the Longmont Caring Community, that's the middleware project that we've been working on with the University of Colorado. I think they sent. And right now where we are is we have the contract, we're actually going to go test, we're going to start testing the system. Hopefully, in the spring. And that's the system that really starts connecting all of the service agencies to each other so that when we're interacting with an individual, we know who's who else is interacting with a particular person and where we can come together. And and we think we need about another 250 to take that to fold or to where we can use it on an ongoing basis. And then you're seeing about another half a million in for programming staff. So when I talked about really tapping into these other sources of funding that exist in other agencies, that's the individual assistance liaison position. As you know, with all of these federal dollars, the accounting component becomes a major issue that we have to deal with. So we need a half accountant and so that we can deal with this. And then we're also looking at self sufficiency, self sufficiency county funding, business assistance. So really working both on the individual and the business assistant side for self sufficiency in terms of tapping into some of those other programs. Excellent. So your options today, council, are direct us to continue with the projects we presented or direct staff to adjust allocations that we presented today. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I move we direct staff to continue.
Okay. That was moved by Counselor Waters, seconded by Counselor Martin to move it into consideration. All those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you, Harold.
Thank you.
We have one last bill for an ordinance. It's 0202203. A bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2020. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for January 25th, 2020. I made a mistake. We have this other presentation which needs to go first, which is the Costco project. So forget that ordinance. Let's go back to Harold, Jim and Dale. The they have a presentation on the Costco project.
Mayor, there you can go, the presentation is for the ordinance.
It is, okay.
It is. It is for this. This appropriation is associated with the Costco project. And the second hearing is scheduled for the next meeting on the 25th.
Okay, so are you going to have the update to the project cost tonight?
Yeah, we have a presentation that Jim can.
Do you want to do that before we vote on this ordinance?
Yeah, we need to do this presentation first.
Okay, all right. It's back to you, Harold.
Jim?
It was a hand up. Mayor.
Councilman Waters?
Well, I was going to move ordinance 2022-03.
Right.
If the staff feels like they have to do a presentation, but we've had a fair amount of information. We all understand, you know, where we are and how we got here. So if if let me make the motion, if there's a second, they can still do the presentation. At least we can get it on the table.
Well, I'm going to interrupt you because that's the exact question that I asked. Do they need to do a presentation before the ordinance? Did I understand you correctly, Harold, that you need to do the?
No, you can go. You can go ahead and make the presentation. Jim, I mean, I think you can cover a couple of slides and just once they.
I wasn't planning on doing any slides at this point. I could do just the exact summary, but the council does have all the information in the communication. So if they would prefer, we do that in two weeks, they can move the ordinance.
We can do that.
All right, go ahead, Counselor Waters. You're going to move that ordinance.
I'll move it again.
Thank you.
I move approval of ordinance 2022-03.
Right, a second. Counselor Hidongo Ferring is seconded. All those in favor of moving this ordinance, please raise your hand. All those opposed? That carries unanimously. So are we going to have this Costco presentation tonight or in?
Two weeks.
Thank you. All right. We are now at the final call, public invited to be heard. I personally hate to give five minutes of our time to this at this point, but let's go ahead and put up the slide, Dallas, for the final public invited to be heard call in.
Just a moment, Mayor. It is not coming up for me. See if this works. There we go.
Okay, I would like, it is now time to call in for the final public invited to be heard. The information is on displayed on the screen. Please mute the live stream and dial in now. We'll take a five minute break to give everyone time to get dialed in. Thank you. How's it looking, Dallas?
We are at about the three minute mark. I'm currently seeing no callers in the chat.
Okay.
Mayor Peck, we are approaching the five minute mark. I'm still seeing no callers in the chat.
Okay, let's shut that down then. I don't want to have anybody. We are now at the mayor and council comments. Do we have any more comments from councilors? Looks like we have none. How about city manager Harold? Do you have any other comments?
No comments, Mayor Council.
Thank you, city attorney Eugene.
No comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Martin and seconded by Counselor Waters. Thank you very much. There will be no meeting next week. So enjoy the time off.